I think you're good to go. Hey, good afternoon, folks. We are here and I am going to open the municipal building authority meeting first. And then we will move into our regular meeting, just so you know, and then I'm going to call for citizens to be heard. Regarding the municipal building authority meeting. And then we'll close the meeting out, move into our regular meeting and eventually get to our citizens to be heard. So be patient with me on the first one and. Currently at this meeting, we have Commissioner Hadler, Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless, myself, Commissioner Winfield. And do we have Trish online or was she, she gonna be absent?
She was planning on zooming in as far as.
We'll, we'll note her when she gets here. And so at this point, I will open the municipal building authority meeting. And we will start off with approval of the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. And I'm.
Yes, so moved.
A motion to approve minutes, Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner McCandless. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, and we will then move on to the. Ops, what's that? Okay, passes six to zero with Commissioner Hadeen. And I will move on then to the citizens that would like to speak regarding the municipal bonds that were issued for a fire engine. For the Grand, let's see Canyonlands Airport. And seeing none, nobody wants to speak about the fire engine? Alright, I will then close citizens to be heard and with that, I will close the meeting. And adjourn at this time and, and move into our regular meeting. Thank you. Alright, same commissioners are present. We still are absent Commissioner Hadeen. For the regular Grand County Commission meeting, it is four oh three P M. And we will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Alright, we will move into our regular meeting, citizens to be heard and. If we have anybody that wants to start us off, gentleman in the far back on the right was first and then we'll go to Marjorie on the left. Please introduce yourself and we try to keep to three minutes as much as possible.
My name's Mike Toninelli. I've lived in Moab since nineteen seventy-six. I had a painting business here for thirty-nine years. I'm here, you guys, I, this has taught me so much. I've learned chat P T, G P T in the last two weeks. And you guys are gonna be happy with this. It asked me if I wanted a shorter version and I said yes. So here you go. I'm here to speak on behalf of many pickleball players in our community who are asking again for dedicated courts. You already voted to build them and we are hoping you will follow through on that commitment. Last week was a perfect example of the challenges we face. Middle school where we normally play. Had the kids circus camp for two weeks. The camp's a really cool thing for the kids and we're glad that they had it, but we were out. So then we had the high school to play, except we can't chalk the courts during tennis season. It's fall tennis season. So that's our dilemma. Like we couldn't play at the Center Street Gym, I'm losing track. And we couldn't play at the high school. So we had no work played. This isn't a casual hobby for people. It's not frivolous. It's meaningful. It supports physical health, mental health, social connection. For many of us, it's our lifeline, a way to stay active, engaged and connected to our neighbors. Like I said, when I retired, this is my new family. People of all ages play, including seniors who rely on this exercise, friendship and routine. Some of us drive long distances just to play and even then we're often turned away because the courts are full or because we're being bumped for something. We're not asking for anything extravagant. We just want the space that reflects the actual demand. Pickleball's growing fast. Our community deserves facilities that support that growth. We understand that you have many difficult decisions to make. That's our leadership. But this one's clear. We, you've already jumped forward and, and the need is only growing. Your action now will show that you're listening and following through. One minute, okay? And with the grant money and the money the city has dedicated, this project will never be as cheap as right now. Anyway, I think it's a worthy investment for the community's health and connection. Please follow through with your earlier decision and help us build a proper dedicated court. We're ready to play and we just need a place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a microphone?
It, it picks you up, so yes.
Apologies, my name is Marjorie Storland, Han Storland. I live in Old LaSalle. I have a severe voice disorder. So I do ask for grace as I struggle through these comments. The northern end of San Juan County is a cellular dead zone. There are areas where four G connectivity can be blocked, but they are generally very limited and are not reliable. Those who live in small towns, neighborhoods here, Lisbon Valley, LaSalle, Brownsville, Old LaSalle, Ray Mesa, Happy Gap, among others. Have no reliable means of communication unless they are connected to an internet service provider. The recent Deer Creek fire provides a stark scenario of how dangerous it can be for people to be without reliable means of communication. The fire started on Thursday, June tenth, a half mile from my home. Hard winds from the west drove it directly to the east where it spread longitudinally. And by that evening, it had consumed over four thousand acres of forests and range lands and several homes and structures. By July twelfth, the fire was climbing the ridge toward the northeast and the hangdog area was under threat. Around noon that day, the fire blew up along the ridge north of Wolf Springs Ranch and created a massive fire tornado. That burned up half of the ranch and destroyed six cabins and heavily damaged two. Lost in that weird event was the River Canyon wire's internet tower. That wire's internet tower was the primary source of internet connectivity for most residents in the area impacted by the Deer Creek fire. As we are in a cellular dead zone, residents who are dependent on what's I calling were immediately left out, left without a means of communication. Franti Fowling members who saw the mushroom cloud invaded by the fire tornado could not reach their loved ones. Residents without communication, many who are longtime residents or elderly and have limited mobility. Were unable to receive evacuation orders or updates about the fire activity. A smaller tornado spun off a large tornado, hurling burning debris to the south of the hangdog area. Residents were cut off from one another and emergency services frightened and confused, not knowing what was happening or what the hell was available. Due to our topography and weather conditions, incidents like this will occur again in the future. It is essential to human health and public safety that all communication capabilities are provided to the people. Who live, work and have difficulty in the rugged high desert and mountain rain of northern San Juan County. I support a tower of sufficient height to fully serve the people of this area. For context, the Lattigo Wind Farm located near Monticello covers approximately three thousand six hundred acres of private land. It consists of twenty-seven wind turbines. Each turbine has a tower height of two hundred and eighty feet. And is equipped with three blades, each measuring a hundred and eighty-seven feet in length. Total height of each turbine, including the blade tip at its highest point, reaches approximately three hundred and eight feet. At the top of each of the twenty-seven wind turbines is a red warning light that is clearly visible at night all night. Human life is precious. Many of the people in Old LaSalle, my neighborhood, have homes and properties that go back generations. They deserve to have every measure available to protect their legacies, their livestock and their lives. This cellular tower is no longer a matter for having about aesthetics. It is an absolute necessity. Thank.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, yes. Please, you, yes, don't remember your name though.
Hello, hello, again, everybody. Council members, geez, it's hard to talk after that. That's not a happy thought. Pickleball's such a happy thought.
Please introduce yourself for the.
Okay, I'm Patty Jones. I'm a member of the. Board of the Friends of Moab Pickleball Club that we have that I'm, I'm not sure how many of you know that that even exists. So. Barb Hicks is going to talk about it in a minute and. I, first I, I wanna say that one of the purposes of the board is to promote pickleball in Moab. And moat it, moat the play and the sport and. In your community and the surrounding area. So that's one of our purposes. So I'd like to answer some questions. It's been raised about the future maintenance of the courts. The great thing about pickleballs is there's no grass to mow. There's no grass to water. It's not a pool that needs to be chemically treated. Nor does it need to be manned with referees or lifeguards or, or any kind of outside influence. There's nothing mechanical that needs to be worked on. I've been in contact with the Saint George City Rec Manager and he says that what they do is, is. Spray down their courts with the water rake every four to eight weeks. And depending on the weather, use a leaf blower for dust and leaves in the meantime. So not a lot of maintenance there. The court nets are replaced every four to five years. It's, it's not a big issue. So I think you guys know that we've had close to fifty members of our club volunteer five to fifteen hours annually to. To take care of this maintenance issues. So, and that's a lot of hours for what. We don't perceive to be a big issue. I have a friend that lives in Gunnison, Colorado. They have six to eight courts. They take care of their courts themselves. The city doesn't even. Yeah, the city, they're living in the city, don't do anything about it. So I don't perceive it to be a big issue as far as maintenance goes. As far as tournaments go, tournaments, you know, we're here to play pickleball. All people behind me are here to play pickleball. We're happy to do tournaments because tournaments are fun, but that's not our focus. Our focus is on our community and, and playing the game. But we also have the Saint George managers offered to come over and help us pull off tournaments. He's a really nice guy. I can't remember his name right now. And the Cortez players wanna come over and help us do tournaments. I've been there to. A couple of tournaments and they're very friendly and nice and they've been holding tournaments for the past few years and they are very eager to come over and play in Moab. So tournaments are going to be, could be a thing. They're gonna draw out counters and, but the main thing that. I think about who's gonna come and play pickleball is it's going to cause an extension of people's stay in Moab. They're gonna come and hike Delicate Arch one day and they're gonna play pickle the next day. There's a lot of people out there that. Are tourist pickleball players and it's easy to do. You get online and you say, where's the pickleball courts in Moab? And right now there's no pickleball courts in Moab. Put it in there and there's like three or four major sites that do that. It'll come up, pickleball courts in Moab and people will be coming to play pickleball. So I think that usage will grow as the knowledge of our courts grow. I think you guys got a, a email from. One of our players that said about eight courts and how many tournaments they can, how many people they involved for tournaments and how many out of towners come.
We're, we're well over time, Patty, if you.
Oh, okay, okay. So. I was gonna say a little bit more about the usage, but I'll just keep that. I think the usage is gonna grow. Everybody in this room thinks the usage is gonna grow. And I know you guys are in a pickle with your financial strength, but please and thank you in advance for your helpful trouble on this project.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Hicks. I'm on the, also on the board of the Friends of Moab Pickleball Club. And just wanted to give you a little background about our organization. We have been incorporated in, as a nonprofit in the state of Utah since twenty twenty-one. We have a checking account with money in it. We have members. We have ability to fundraise. We have ability to host tournaments. And even in our articles in incorporation, you know, it says, I don't like right here, it says. The organization, promotion and conducting pickleball events, tournaments and related activities. We are ready to go. We are so willing to help Angie. I assume she'll want our help in organizing it. We have lots of other cities that we can model after. Our friends in Grand Junction, they have a pickleball club with nine hundred members. I mean, they have everything. They have trial and error. They know what works, what doesn't. We don't have to reinvent the wheel on how we set up the usage at the, at our pickleball courts. But we're just here to let you know, we are an entity, we're organized and we are ready to roll. Thank you very much.
Have anybody else? Yes, Mr. Green. Oh, sorry, young lady, you'll come up after him.
She can go.
Thank you, Kent, and thank you if you'd just introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Sarah Libby. I'm on the LaSalle Fire Department. We really need that tower put up high enough for us to have service in LaSalle. As a fire department, we did a survey and went around to people's homes and called nine one one from their homes. Out of the people that we did, we did thirty-four people and every single one of them could not call nine one one. That was without, sure, what the call might have gone through, but they would have to move around their yard, around their home. Which isn't, isn't great when their loved one needs CPR. How are you gonna do CPR when you have to walk out to the backyard to get cell service? Even landlines, we couldn't call. They had to call three or four times to make nine one one calls to get through. On landlines. We've lost quite a few LaSalle residents due to this because they can't get out to nine one one and when they finally do, it's too late. So we really do need this tower.
Thank you, sir. And I will go to some of our online folks that would like to weigh in right now.
You see, Trish show up too, if you want.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And we also have Commissioner Hadeen who has joined us now online.
I think this is TC. TC, if you'd like to, go ahead, please.
Hello, Grand County Commissioners, TC Garcia out of LaSalle here. I would just like to echo everything that my dear neighbor Marjorie said earlier and Sarah just mentioned a second ago. I'm also a member of the volunteer fire department here in LaSalle and as Sarah just pointed out, there. Has been multiple times where folks out here, due to lack of cellphone service, have not been able to get a hold of. The emergency medical services and the fire department when they have needed to. So I understand that they. Issue for building a cellphone tower on Black Ridge is in front of you guys today. And I would just like to really encourage you guys to support as tall of a tower as practicable to provide as much service as we can. Up here to LaSalle and Old LaSalle and all the folks that recreate in our neck of the woods. Thanks for your time, everybody. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else online? Alright, I'll go back to the commission chambers. Mr. Green, please. Thanks for being patient.
My name's Kent Green and I wanna talk a little bit about what we have in our county, which is very unique, is the. Arena out there, the Equestrian Center. And I think it's a great place for the pickleball area. But it's also a great place for softball tournaments, volleyball tournaments and all kinds of activities. Cause it's, it just goes to, it just makes perfectly good sense to have something like that and it brings in a lot of people, but it also benefits our community. And as far as being able to go out and have a place to play pickleball or, or softball. I mean, it's, it's a great area out there. And I just encourage you to really support that because it is an area that needs to be used. And it needs to. That's only in seconds, it needs to be used. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Del Rio. I'm Assistant Fire Chief for LaSalle Fire. And my specialty is this L tower out there. We've had multiple incidents with fire coverage where we can't even get on our cells, out on our radios, anything. The Deer Creek fire was a, a big deal. Cause in the first hour of it, we lost communications with our dispatch. So we had no communications for over an hour. So. Our residents couldn't get out, couldn't call out, nothing. They can't, unless they have their internet, they can't call us. We can't respond. We rely on it. Even down in the bottom, LaSalle where I live. Where I'm off of the highway, even there, I don't have cell service. I use my internet. And if it goes down, we don't have a way to communicate out, none of us. So we're in desperate need of a cell tower through northern San Juan County. It will help out the Grand County best. It'll help out everyone. If you guys get a tower that's tall enough to cover that area. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Looking from all our faces. Uh, hi, my name's Shelby Rutter. I am on the LaSalle Fire Department for volunteer. During the power outage that happened probably six, seven months ago. Power went out for like six to eight hours through Moab, all the way up to LaSalle, all the way down Monticello. And it was kinda scary out there because it's pitch black, same as Moab. But the thing is, is we didn't have service. We had to go to our neighbor's house to be like, do you need a thing? What can we help you with? And that was really a bummer because we have family, friends, people that need us there when, when. When something happens in those instances, like my grandma, she needs the heat, but she can't get hold of anybody. Cause phones are down. She doesn't even have a cell phone. She uses her home phone. So we had to like go there, get her, take her somewhere where it's warm. So that's kind of why the tower's super important to reach out to LaSalle and Old LaSalle because all of our friends' family need that. To be safe and same with the fire department when. During the fire, we couldn't talk to anybody. I tried calling my assistant chief and couldn't get a hold of her. Her radios weren't working and we couldn't even get. Ahold of sheriffs, the sheriffs. We had to drive around to go talk to one another and when we should have been putting the fire out, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Yes, you.
I'm Boston Carter, homeowner of this place. I've been here a couple of times now. I'm sure some of you recognize me. There's a big problem we have up there with right property rights. We actually don't have any at this point. Had it for a few years. Can't get trespasses done. People up there walking around, D W R can authorize hunts take place on your private property, whether you like it or not. I can't get them to address it. In fact, they'll use. Hunts as a weaponized device to cause you harm with pen and pencil. When you're having arguments over device and damage and so on, it's going on. They also won't respond for that. No checks and balances on where all the money's being spent. I got pretty good evidence that it's against use for private things, nobody to address it. Another issue that's going on, there's lots of issues going on in Green River area. Yeah, we'll look close where I'm from. Hastings Road just got rebuilt. At the taxpayer's dollar, but it got destroyed by a private farm out there that's owned by a China hit organization. They should be flipping the bill for the damages on the roads, not the taxpayers on that. Maybe the taxpayers are spending money. It should be on law. Situation like that. Kind of sensitive subject because I see the property down there along the river that I can't even use now. Could states use that one too for their materials storage apparently. Taxes went from just like a hundred and sixty a year to like three eighty a year or something like that. And now all of a sudden they're going from like three eighty to like nine eighty. And you can't even use this property. Nobody's living on it. I kept my cows on it because of the hazardous material. That was my cabbie operation. I haul water like sixty thousand dollars a year now, just to go haul water thirty miles every day. My livestock, my cell, anything to survive. And I have riverfront property on the tax notices in my thieves. I can't even see there. I have no access to it. Can't live in the desert without access to the river. I mean, that's the whole point of the properties we have along there. So we can survive. And that's pretty much all I have to talk on. I got a lot I can go into, but. Now these things are, I don't wanna overwhelm you with too many issues. Anybody wants to address some of these things? I got lots of documentation. Evidence and stuff that I've fleshed out. We certainly shouldn't be paying for damaged roads and stuff by Chinese owned farms that are damaged. Taxpayers here in Grand County don't know about the thing that they're not there on that side of the county. So. I bring that to their attention on here. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's Doug Sartson. I've been a resident of Grand County for fifteen years and I am here to support pickleball. I love it. It's a, it's a great sport. I, I travel all around the state of Utah. We play in all different kinds of areas. And Grand County is one of the few remaining areas that do not have pickleball courts still. I can tell you this, in my case, just the exercise and meeting the people on the court. The majority of the players I play with, I would say probably sixty percent of the people that are on a pickleball court for fifty years and older. It's the only sport I know of that anybody can play without you, without ever picking up a paddle or racket. Baseball bat, whatever it is, you can immediately start to play and enjoy and, and get those exercises. For the residents of Grand County, and I see this growing constantly. I know there's been times I've been in the gym where you're playing. Pickleball's really not meant to be played on wood floor, but there's not a lot of options to do. Chalking lines on concrete and. Playing on wood floors to play this game. It's, it's all we have. That's all there is to it. There's been times where we've had to wait forty-five minutes to an hour to even. Play pickleball because there's so many people interested in playing it. And again, the majority of those people are people who need that exercise. This is their life. This is what they do. They don't wanna run on a treadmill in a gym. I owned the Portal Resort for fifteen years. And through the tourist end of this, we had more and more people, RV and vacation home people coming to us saying. When are you gonna build a pickleball court? To the point that we actually put one in. And it's been a huge success for that business. It actually brings people in. Majority of people that are into this travel, we fly with our pickleball paddles. Everywhere we go is with a pickleball paddle. Simply to look for games, meet new people. It's a lifestyle. I recommend every one of you up here, try it because you will. Simply to look for games, meet new people. It's a lifestyle. I recommend every one of you up here try it because you will, you will enjoy it. So I am here to support the pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a quick. Hi, I'm Kevin Fishkero. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you guys for your job that you're doing. I mean, I know this is tireless job and thank you, thank you, thank you for all the effort and time you put in. We appreciate you guys. Um, you know, our volunteer group, I'm sure we'd be willing to pick up the playground as well as the pickleball courts. You know, we're willing to put the effort and time in to make sure this passes County any more money to, you know, facilitate us as pickleball players. And we're really excited about having the playground there because families come out there to play pickleball. Mom and dad can play pickleball and the kids can play on the playground, which is a really good thing for our community and we're just really looking forward to the, to the courts. Blanding put in some courts. They're already very disappointed that they didn't double the size of their courts. So it's a, it's a happening game and let's play pickleball.
One more pickleball comment. My name is Dora Dean McKelley and I'm the newest member probably here. I've been here like seven, eight months to Moab and we moved here full-time. I love it. So it's an honor to be in front of you all. Um, I played pickleball because I was given a racket by my son. I'm a tennis player for the last twenty years. So anybody who plays tennis, it's hard to carry around your tennis racket, but not a pickleball racket, but all those tennis players come and pick it up. But I'm also a retired nurse recently and I duly have, you know, heartfelt, you know, objective to the cell tower as well. Only saying like our first tournament that we do a fundraiser about support this, you know, this cell tower because that's the kind of communication that you need, having been out in the field and having helped people. But that's the kind of community building that pickleball can bring and also fundraise for. And that, that would be an idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else? All right, I will make one comment in case some of the cell tower people leave before we get to that agenda item. And that is that fifteenth of August is when public comment will open at the BLM. And so if you want to make those comments, that's when you should include them so that the BLM gets those included. And I'll mention that again when we get to the item, but I know sometimes people speak of citizens be hurting that bill out of here for the fact they don't want to enjoy the rest of the meeting with us, but certainly if there's anybody else, do we have anybody else online? Or does that it? Anybody else in the auditorium or chambers here? All right, we appreciate it. Thanks for everybody showing up and we will move on in our meeting here. Like, we even personally have a department report from Sean. He knew about it. We could start with Mr. Bowles if you're ready and then we can see if we can get ahold of Sean.
Because I did know Sean on the roof, Brandon, so.
Okay, take it away. All right. My name is Stephen Bowles, Finance Officer of the County, going to give an update on county finances. We have established already that our finances are in a state of pickle, but and we've realized that over, over time. And I'm going to share some, some updates today, which I think are rather positive. Uh, this chart here, yes.
Can you make that bigger?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, packets will. And then when you're done, Stephen, it'd be great if you could send that out to all of us. Yeah, well, I send the packet.
You can enlarge your packets.
This is the chart that we've looked at each month and it's track, track. The blue line is the budget. The green line is the actuals and the red line below is the cumulative variance budget over actuals. Uh, and now our, our cumulative variance is negative. This is why we, you know, been cautious, cautious in our spending. Um, and then you can see here where there's a little dotted yellow line. We adjusted the budget this last month, taking six percent out to account for the revenue shortfall. So the yellow dotted line was the original budget. The blue line in the future is the adjusted revenue. And there we are right in, uh, July for, for revenue targets. From July. All right. So the bottom line is that we're, we're down. But we've improved. We were minus six percent below budget last month in terms of revenue. Now we are minus four. So we've improved two percentage points. Um, and then we're going to just continue watching this chart through the rest of the, rest of the year and see where we, where we end up. All right, now we got to another chart here. This is the cumulative variance in revenue and, uh, and expenditures. You'll see the yellowish line highlighted. I'm going to call out that we were twenty-four percent under budget in January. But notice the trend. It's all negative, but we are improving. We've gone from twenty-four percent below budget, actuals against budget, to now minus four percent. I see this as a positive trend. Of course, I don't have a crystal ball in front of me and, and see where that's going, but I think that's a positive trend. The green bar down below is the expenditure variance. And it is minus eight percent. So although revenue is down four percent, our expenses are down eight percent. So net, we're, uh, not over, overspend. And you guys can stop me if you have any questions. I could just kind of run through my charts. All right, now I want to go through each tax type, non-property tax, property taxes on its own. And just kind of highlight some of the things. TRT receipts, it's still down five percent year over year. But this July twenty twenty-five tax receipts for the month of May is the second highest receipt we've had in the last three years and the fourth best, highest receipt since twenty seventeen. We had a good year, I mean, a good month for TRT. Um, restaurant, restaurant tax, this is our shining star. I mean, it's raining dollar bills, y'all. I don't know what's going on with, with the restaurant, but it's up ten percent. And, uh, this is the biggest highest month ever for tax receipts on, on restaurant. And that goes back to twenty seventeen, but why I say ever, because I have, I have data from twenty seventeen. Sales tax, sales tax is down six percent, twelve, you know, and then twelve month over. Um, you know, but it's still the highest, uh, since August of twenty twenty-three. Right? Hospital tax up slightly. Um, but it's pretty stable. Car rental tax, the worst performer. I wish I understood why car rental is not performing as well and maybe somebody has ideas.
The two businesses, big businesses out at the airport don't exist anymore.
Well, that's it. That's it. We're down only one percent on, on the car rental tax. All, this is just the cumulative of all sales tax. So we're down four percent year over year. Not good, but you can see the trend line here. In fact, you, you've seen these charts before where the trend line, the little, the lighter dotted blue line, we're all going down. We're looking a little more neutral or, or even, even though we're four percent down year over year. This July twenty twenty-five is the second highest month in the three years recorded here. And the fourth largest month since twenty seventeen. So we're down, but last month was, maybe an anomaly, but last month was a good month for revenue. In fact, just a couple more charts here. The, the top chart, you'll see, we've talked about the twenty-five percent change. That's the year over year. We're down four point two percent for just the one year over year. But the three-year average is point eight, almost just one percent. So I still think using a one-year or a three-year, we're still down about one to four percent below what we're used to. Um, and we did adjust our twenty twenty-five budget, the blue chart down there, the twenty twenty-five budget, we adjusted revenue down to fifteen million, nine thirty-nine. Using the most current forecast with the, a little more optimistic numbers, I hope we can beat our current revenue forecast and actually hope come in a little closer to the original yellow line. But again, I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball in front of me and I, looking at these numbers, we're actually going to show you one more chart and I'll kind of summarize. This, this is, there's a lot here. This is the, the balances, the fund balances for all of our funds from, from, uh, uh, what's the year? All right, twenty fifteen forward. The one thing I just want to call out in the bottom here is the percent change. You notice we grew fourteen percent, also twenty-nine percent, ten percent till this year. Minus three percent. But I will say a big part of that minus three percent is the airport capital fund went to one point six million negative. That's just the timing between uh, expenditures, expenses and, and grants received. So I would think we were going to be close to zero percent change, but it's clear that we're spending more from our savings this year than we have past. It is clear. So if I had to put a summary on my statement is that um, you know, we're down. But it's looking a little bit better. It's okay to be cautious the way we are and just keep our eyes on, on the numbers for the next few months and it, I mean, hope is not a strategy, but hope for, you know, a good fall.
Oh, my chart, maybe, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but it says we're not down three percent, we're down point three percent.
From, on which chart?
On which one?
Your show is there.
Oh, the one I'm showing? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So not easy.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot different.
Oh, the, the, if I said three percent, that was a, that was a misquote, spoke.
Yeah. Can this be attributed, uh, during July in this month to the movie crew being in town?
Yeah, this is from May.
This is from.
Yeah, July is May and we.
So it's back.
May was good.
Yeah, yeah. I know they were in town for a minute, so I mean, overnight stays in a lot of restaurants.
We'll see them in, in two months.
Right. Any other questions? Yes.
On the second chart, Steve, you have, so the expenditure variance, just looking at that, so we're.
The second page?
Yeah, on the second page, the chart would be yellow and green. So to clarify that, so we're, we're spending, we spent over a million less than we had budgeted for. Or is that what that number is?
Um, yes.
Okay. And that's it.
Probably because of our, whatever, putting up some guardrails.
Yeah. Um, okay, so that's a great number. It's like you said, negative is favorable, right? Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Steve. We will move on to Sean and, and.
Afternoon, guys.
How we doing, Sean?
I'm pretty good, very good. Uh, trying to make this short, but not speed read through it.
Hang on, I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Yep. Uh, for those of you that don't know, public and other, I'm Sean Fugit. I run the maintenance department for the county. Um, um, well, Quinn's getting that ready. I'll just kind of do my summary here. Uh, the county maintenance department is directly responsible for the upkeep and repair of fourteen county facilities. Performing a wide range of tasks, including HVAC, electrical plumbing, carpentry and general repairs. Our primary objective is to ensure all that all buildings remain functional and well-maintained and provide a safe environment for county employees and, and the public. Uh, these facilities include, but are not limited to, the courthouse, jail, sheriff's office, Star Hall. In addition to the facility maintenance, the department also maintains approximately thirteen miles paved path located north of town. This includes a stretch along the river road as well as the trail out. Pathway maintenance involves mowing, sweeping, pruning, erosion control and other upkeep activities to ensure the paved path remains safe, remains safe. Slide two.
That one or the next one?
Uh, next one. Oh, yeah, that, that's it. It's good. Um, in twenty twenty-five, projects were largely driven by damage caused by last year's hailstorm. Along with resulting insurance claim that covered much of the repair work. These necessary improvements focused on restoring and upgrading key county facilities. Projects include Star Hall roof and foundation replacement, new HP system, HPA systems for the Mob Information Center, Travel Council and OSTA, as well as the courthouse not yet completed. These projects not only address storm-related damage, but also improve long-term, long-term energy, energy efficiency and comfort in heavily used public buildings. Sorry. Uh, go back. Keep going back to Star Hall. Yeah, right there. All right. That one? Yeah, that works. Last year's hailstorm caused significant damage to roof and gutters and gable and Star Hall. Due to the extent of the damage, county's insurance provider covered full cost replacing all three components. As a result, Star Hall now has a beautiful new roof, expected to last at least thirty years at no cost to taxpayers. Say that lightly because we still have to pay our premiums for insurance, so. This project was originally scheduled for replacement in the next four years due to the roof's age. That's kind of project. I like seeing that roof again next. Um, next slide, slide. Just like the damage to Star Hall's roof, last year's hailstorm caused significant harm to HP systems across multiple county facilities. This widespread damage prompted the county's insurance provider to cover some or all of replacement costs of these units, saving taxpayers' dollars, accelerating plant upgrades. Many of these units were nearing end of life and scheduled for replacement with, in the next two to three years, making this a timely and efficient upgrade opportunity. Next slide. Pictured here are the new HVACC units being installed at Mob Information Center, OSTA and Travel Council. Slide, yeah, there you go. Um, the units shown here are part of the courthouse HVAC replacement project. I had originally planned to replace these units this year at full cost to the county. However, due to last year's hailstorm and resulting insurance claims, much of this work is now being subsidized by the county, county's insurance provider, significantly reducing the financial burden on taxpayers. Sorry if this is redundant, guys. But there was a lot of it. Also included in this project are seven hail damaged coils from newer HVAC units I pictured here. Project is currently in progress and will be completed once the contractor receives all required parts and equipment. I like to note that this doesn't represent all of the HVAC units that we, that were damaged in last year's storms. The Grand Center and Star Hall are still in need of replacement, which I plan to do next year. Slide. The next project is the replacement of a thirty-year-old automatic transfer switch at the courthouse. This work has been in progress for over a year and a half now, primarily due to ongoing supply chain issues. I am pleased to report that the new ATS was delivered three weeks ago and the contractor is scheduled to complete installation by mid to late month. This device is critical, is a critical component. This device is critical, is a critical component of emergency backup power for both courthouse and the jail. Serving as the second half of the infrastructure to ensure continuous power during the hydrages. Go next slide. Paypath maintenance. In addition to the routine maintenance that we perform annually on the paypath. Last year's storm caused significant damage, just damage disrupting access and raising safety concerns. Try to switch next slide. There is a road, there was a path in there somewhere. Throughout much of this year, my my team's been focused on repairing the damaged sections and addressing erosion issues that have. Gradually worsened over the life of the past. Each rainstorm, wall from new and recurring issues continue to emerge. Understoring the need for ongoing attention and long-term solutions. Thank you. Next slide. Questions?
Sure, Joe.
Hey Sean, yeah, thanks. I've read the path at least times a week and it's you guys have done a great job with fixing that damage. I was wondering, there's that one section that you fixed with the gravel, it's probably what fifty yards or so? Um, or is there plans to repave that at some?
I think there is, um, that's, I think that's, I think the road department's taking that on since they're a little more in the knowledge for. For asphalt and the type that needs to go down.
Certainly.
It's a special type of asphalt, it's more elasticity to it than like the road. I think they're waiting for it to cool off.
Doesn't pour well the heat, so.
Got it. Great, thank you, Sean.
But other than that, I think it felt about it to check here.
Any else?
Yes, I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate being cool and I did this thought, so. Didn't realize it, you know, until something drinks he goes out and you're like, oh my goodness.
And they, you know, when you have big units on buildings and you're like, it'll just get hot quick, you're like, why do?
So, so.
Thank you, guys.
I really appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. Always busy and working somewhere, so thanks.
Well, you've got something to do. If you're not doing anything, then you're not doing your job, you know, especially in maintenance, so.
Alright, I will welcome Mr. Keller up to bring us up to speed on the. Presentation here on what we have noted as the. Fixed guideway sales tax, just to center in parentheses.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just uh, gonna try to share my screen here and get the presentation pulled up. I apologize, hopefully that's big enough there, it's not gonna give me, I'm not sure if I can zoom in. Too much, there we go. Is that a little bit better? There's a little bit fine print in some spots, but it's gonna keep adjusting back. So if there's any sections you need me to zoom in on, I'll I'll focus in on that, but. Appreciate you having me back. Uh, you know, we enjoyed working with you as we've helped you with this leash revenue bond. And then today we wanted to give you an update on your options on what we've called. The two-two-one-six public safety sales tax or mass fix guideway sales tax as was referred to. By Commissioner Winfield. It's really important that I, you know, as we've talked to Gabe and Steve and other commissioners here about this. And we worked with counties across the state to implement this. Truly important to understand kind of why. This is such a unique opportunity, a little bit of background on it. Um, that we'll go over in the presentation and then kind of how this would affect the county directly and the benefits. That would come from it. And then also too, I've actually included a few additional slides that were included in the original packet. That kind of compares your options here, comparing this to what would this look like if you had to do this through a property tax increase? And how this would affect your residents. And so we'll be going over quite a few things here, but feel free to to pause me or slow me down if you have any questions on it. And uh, we'll we'll go from there. So. Uh, a couple of years ago, we work with Iron County as well. They have a very large and outdated jail, or at least they used to. And one of the big things that's happened over the last, I would say probably five to ten years is that capital expenses have just gone through the roof. So these projects that maybe cost, you know, thirty, forty, fifty million dollars, which is a big price tag. Are now close to six figures. In the case of Iron County, when they priced out their jail in twenty seventeen, it was about a sixty million dollar project. Um, they just finished and they're currently getting close to the end of construction about the next year. Ended up final cost about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. So these are huge price tags that I think every county needs to start preparing for today. And these are some tools that I think will help you so that you don't have to do following kind of some of the pitfalls of, oh my gosh, hit the fire alarm. Let's, you know, have to jack up property taxes and everybody's mad type situation. So what we did. Uh, working with them is we actually went to the legislature and in January twenty twenty four. Where we were able to get amended an old property or old sales tax. And I want to clarify, this is completely separate from anything pertaining to the rural hospital sales tax. I know that's on your agenda. Different sales tax, different subject, completely different. So want to make that distinction upfront, so it doesn't muddy the waters during this conversation. Um, and so we went with them and we got the legislature to approve updating the mass fix guideway sales tax. Um, so that it would allow third through the sixth class counties to enact this sales tax through. Uh, a vote of the county commission, so enact this sales tax to collect additional revenues. To help pay for what they call public safety. They didn't define public safety, so it's up to you to define what that is, but. Um, typically people are looking at this for county's point of view as their sheriff, potentially somewhat fire, but mostly for their capital projects. Pertaining to jails in general and maybe sheriff complexes and things of that nature, but. Um, we can go over that in a little bit more detail as well, but this just gives you little updates on the bill that this was pertaining to. So as part of the transportation funding modification. Alright, so what this did was allowed you to enact a sales tax up to point three zero percent countywide. And this would be exempt, and we wanted to make sure this was the case for grocery food sales, so unprepared food. Because the goal of this sales tax is to help people visiting your county to pay for it. Versus a property tax where that burden rests on the backs of your residents and of your commercial businesses.
So is that, is that only for grocery stores? Is that also for restaurants?
So typically unprepared food would be grocery stores, so restaurant would be prepared or, you know, more of a.
Well, no, when the restaurant buys their food.
Oh, um, that's a great question. I'm not sure, I would have, yeah, I I would imagine that's probably tapped exempt.
Is it, that's, yeah, it's pre-tax.
So we're trying to to benefit your residents or at least hold them harmless as much as possible. While allowing people that come to visit your county. Basically be the ones to help generate additional revenues to help pay for this, whereas you know a property tax. Only falls onto the back of your residence, so it kind of helps splice that up a little bit more. And make it less of a direct burden onto your residence. Um, again, this can be used for counties of the third through the sixth class. Specifically, it can be used in and what most people are looking at it is for public safety. Um, the county can adopt this via resolution or ordinance, so it does not go to the voters. Um, it is a direct action of the county because it is something that's directly put on to the county's shoulders as a. I won't say a burden, but as a requirement from the state that you are responsible for the public safety through your sheriff department. Within your county boundaries. So that's why they've given it to the discretion of the county commissioners to decide whether or not to enact this sales tax.
Can it go to the voters though?
It could. If if the county decided to do that, I I will say this, um, most voters do not. Like taxes in general, but more so, most voters don't understand that the county is responsible for their jails and for the public safety. So that's why they made this very distinct to say. It's your decision to, you know, again, at your discretion, I guess you could send it to the voters. Uh, to date, any county, and I believe, and I have a list that shows all the ones that have enacted it to date. None of them have gone to the voters because they know how critical this is and how important it is to start collecting right away. But again, that's a great question. It absolutely could at your discretion. Yes, ma'am.
Not that I'm considering this, but like, it says point three percent, is that the high? So could we like do a two-five or? Uh, you know.
So the state, so so sales tax is kind of interesting. So we actually asked that question to the Utah State Tax Commission. And said, you know, could we do something less than that? And they basically said, please don't. They just said, they they said it's so hard how we have to basically track this and everything else that. I think in their mind it is, hey, this levy is this amount. You know, we don't want to have to have different levies through each part of the state. Now, I don't think it means that you couldn't. If there was a special number or kind of a number that we landed on that was, you know, just that perfect number. But for the most part, again, any county that's implemented it to date has done the point three zero percent. And I could double check to see if that is a firm requirement or just a a plea. No, that's a great question. We we we've seen it, we kind of asked them about it. And then it kind of fizzled out with some of the people we were talking to about because they just realized they needed the full amount anyways. So but we could absolutely open back up that subject. Um, disqualifiers, um, certain sales taxes, if you already have them, would disqualify you from using the mass. Fix guideway or the public safety sales tax. Currently, um, Grand County does not have those sales tax. So you would qualify if at your discretion, you decided to move forward with the sales tax. I'm just kind of giving you how this would look on this sales tax report. I'm not sure if you guys have ever seen this report before. But it just basically shows all of your current outstanding sales taxes added up. And this would be under the mass fix guideway or M F column. And then on the right side, you would see where your current sales tax rates are, and so point three zero percent would be added on there. So it would increase your current sales tax, but. Um, looking at the county's sales tax to date, you're at a seven point. One, or I apologize, if you were to enact the the point three zero percent. You would be at a seven point one five percent overall sales tax, which would kind of put you in the middle of the pack compared to your peers across the state. So this kind of shows you all the counties that have implemented the mass fix guideway sales tax to date with a little asterisk beside yours because you haven't. But this is what it would look like stacked up against all the other counties across Utah so far. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a quick question? Can you just go through this breakdown of what all these uh, um, all these taxes are? It's so small on here.
I'm sorry, yeah, absolutely.
No, it's okay, just I can't back in that.
We can zoom in here and I apologize that there's a lot of screens on my, on my thing here, so we can.
You can.
So forty-five is state tax?
Yep, so that's your state tax. The one percent is your local sales tax, so anything outside of incorporated. So if there's a business that charges a sales tax in unincorporated, you would get the one percent. The point two-five percent is anything inside incorporated, so um, so. Inside Moab City, you would still get point two-five percent on that sales tax charge. And then scrolling over, some of these, I apologize, I may not be as familiar with, but it looks like you have, there's a little ledger up here at the top. Transportation infrastructure sales tax at point two-five percent, a rural hospital sales tax at point five zero percent. And then for a total amount of, sorry, I've got a screen here that won't go away on mine, six point eight five percent. So if you added the point three to it, then that's where I'm getting that seven point one five percent.
I just wanted a little bit of explanation on what what the sales.
States the largest ones within your, within your boundaries, absolutely. So that's a great question there. Let's see if I can, okay, perfect. Um, and then as you notice here, so all these counties have currently implemented it and are currently collecting that point three zero percent for public safety. It's it's very beneficial and and I'll show you some of the numbers explaining why. The counties on your left have the disqualifier or they're larger than the um. Than the third class or their second and first classes, so they wouldn't qualify either. Um, so here's a current, or this was a twenty twenty-three estimate that showed your taxable. Uh, collections through this or calendar year twenty twenty-three. So the number I want to point you out is in that bottom right hand corner. And it's one million eight hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars. So had you implemented this tax, just to kind of give you an idea of how much this would. For the county in twenty twenty-three, this is how much you would have collected just on this specific sales tax alone. Uh, we did reach out to the state and get twenty twenty-four numbers for you. And so twenty twenty-four would have been one point nine five million roughly or one point nine four nine one one two. And so. It's a, it's a big revenue source relative, I mean, compared to your overall budgets and what you're currently collecting. This could be a big source of revenue for the county to help offset public safety. Yes, sir.
Uh, if that would be our our total collection, do we get that total collection? Or is is there any amount of dividends?
Directly to you.
Held in such and such account occurring interest?
Held in your P T I F account, similar to your county option, local sales, anything else that you collect in sales tax. So this is the net effect and these numbers come directly from the state, so they're, I would assume very accurate. Um, so. Um, this is kind of what I wanted to show you right now. Um, if you look at your county option, these are pulled from your budget, so I apologize if maybe there's some errors there. Uh, we can obviously get anything updated, but um, errors on my part, not errors in your budget, here's where we're putting it together. But uh, what we're showing is that your current total collections and county option and local sales tax, so that point two-five percent and the one percent. That we showed you earlier, you're roughly about two million eight hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars combined. And so adding that additional one point nine million is going to. In our opinion, really help. It's it's not an insignificant amount of money that would help your bottom line there. Um, and then, yep, so if you look at this, this kind of shows you what that would look like uh, with the additional revenues in place. So it would have increased it by about sixty-six percent. Um, I did want to show this because I think it's very important for the public as well, for you as commissioners to understand this. Um, when when you're looking at um, revenues through property tax. Your residents are the ones that feel that burden the most, right? So when you're doing a, let's say, a one point nine million dollar property tax increase. That falls directly on to your residence, residential, commercial, some centrally assessed. But for the most part, residential and commercial carry the bulk of that weight. Um, at the end of the day, the excise tax for something like this helps that burden get put back. I mean, they will still pay, you know, when they go out to restaurants or whatever, but a lot of times hotels. People visiting eat out, you know, I'm here for the night and and I've spent probably too much money already eating out since I've been here. But the people that are visiting your county are helping to help offset some of these budgets and different things like that to help build up that revenue. So it tries to help hold your residents more harm less. I mean, it's, they're still gonna feel some of the effects, but especially with it not being on unprepared food. It should be a lot less um, and more towards people visiting your county. I did just run a a little calculation here, just based off your twenty twenty-four property tax. Um, if you were to do this in the form of property tax, you would have to increase it by roughly forty percent. To generate one point nine million dollars, which would all fall into the back of your residence. And which would increase their property tax bill, uh, just based off some of these numbers on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar residential home. Or four hundred fifty thousand dollar business between a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and two hundred fifty dollars a year, so. This seems to be a very good approach from, I think, both. Residential, you know, if I'm a member of the public seeing this, especially being a destination location. Where people want to come visit Moab, want to come visit, you know, all the different things here, then this seems to be. In my opinion, your best bet on helping you offset expenses, trying to keep it off your resident stacks. Um, just a few ideas here, oh, sorry, let me. Um, so these can be used for sheriff jail, emergency services, fire department. Revenues could be used for O and M, but I would counsel you very strongly. I mean, you guys are the commissioners, you can do whatever you would like, but at the end of the day. You know, you have large capital project needs that are either gonna be here in three to five years or five to ten years or whenever that may be. If you decided to do this, I would strongly suggest not just using it to offset your O and M expenditures. Like, start saving up money today. Start looking for ways to start putting some aside. Even if you know the project's in two to three years and you'll only save up a couple of years' worth. Every little bit's gonna help. And again, with the P T I F over, you know, four and a half percent, that's gonna collect interest on. Every little bit's going to help. And again, with the P TIF over, you know, four and a half percent, that's going to collect interest on it. Even though cost inflation with construction is going to be tough to catch up with, hopefully that'll eventually level out. But at the end of the day, just, just don't let it go into the mix and, and offset something else. Like it, it really should be used to focus on capital projects in our opinion. So. Um, and then, uh, sales tax bonds, that's what we've typically seen people using or looking at them for. Um, so just to give you a little idea of what that would look like, it would be potentially combining all three of the sales tax, local sales, county option. And section two, two, one, six to a pledge of revenue towards upon, even though you would only be making a payment. Directed towards your revenues from two, two, one, six. The other ones would just kind of be a backstop or a credit enhancement to get you better interest rates. And to give you an idea, um, if you were to enact this and potentially look at bonding. Uh, potentially maybe a C I B five plus two, but, um, but you would be able to generate. A bond using about one point nine five million of annual payments for a thirty and a forty year bond. You could generate proceeds between twenty nine and a half to forty five million dollars of bonding. Based off just this new revenue source. So I think that opens up a lot of ideas and a lot of understanding. As you have capital projects coming on up that may relate under this public safety umbrella. That this could really be the silver bullet to help you overcome some of those large price tags. So. Um, disclosure, please don't sue us. There you go. Uh, any questions? I know that was a lot of information. I know we went through it relatively quick. No one ever likes to raise taxes or to put a new tax on the book. I, I completely understand it. I also understand that public safety is usually the one that gets kicked down the road time and time again. Nobody ever wants to face the, the huge, you know, tens of million dollar price tag that comes with rebuilding your jail. Or rebuilding your sheriff offices or rebuilding whatever that may entail. And so I, I think, you know, this is something that commissioners, you could look at today to even just start. Putting sixty, seventy percent of that away every year into a capital fund. And just start preparing, helping prepare so that it's not the worst case situation where you're a county and saying, hey. All of a sudden now we're out of compliance, we're getting sued with our jail, you know, everything's falling apart. Sorry citizens, we have a ninety percent property tax or whatever that is. We didn't plan for it. Like that's what we're trying to help people with. So. Um, perfect. I'll go ahead and I, I'm done. I, I bored you enough.
We have this as a discussion item later. Um, and I would imagine he would stay if we asked him to, but I would suggest that we move the discussion up to now. Um, we'd also have the sheriff here. I mean, we just, well, let him come up if we have any questions. Regarding this, um, Jameson, do you want to come up, join us? I, I just think it would be better to make it easier on both of them and not hold this off to the end of the meeting.
So for people seeing online, what item are you reading?
We are removing the discussion item number eleven. Additional discussion of fixed guide way sales tax, just the center has needed.
Thank you.
Do you need to do disclosures?
No.
Um, I don't think so. Oh yeah, I'll open it up if anybody's got any questions while we have the two of them here. I think we've heard from Jameson on this previously. I know that this would be going towards a much needed justice center for lack of a better word, but.
Um, public safety building, right?
Public safety building, right? Um, anybody?
Although.
No, I think your presentation was great. It definitely clarified a few things in my mind as, as per the, the taxes and the, yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
No, uh, it made it much clearer that it's not going to fall on our roughly ten thousand residents the most. It, it really helps, really helps in our conversations later with our constituents.
Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yes, this was, this helped out. It's really good to see one of the, uh, groceries as such. Because that always disproportionately, uh, affects people with low income situations. So I'm glad to see that. I know that for years we've been talking about trying to make it so that. We have our public safety people in, under one roof. To make it better for communication and better for just, uh, overall of efficiency. So. I'm quite excited about this possibility that we can make that come to fruition without a property tax.
It, I forgot one thing, if that's okay.
Sure.
Uh, just so you are aware, there is a three month delay. So if you were to, let's say enacted, obviously not at this meeting, but at a future meeting. You would not get your first collection for roughly three months, um, from that point. So just, just so you know, that's, that's usually how long it takes the state to update its tax records and, and start getting those records.
Does that mean businesses wouldn't be charging for three months?
I, I, well, I, I think, I think it's just, I, I'm not sure if there's just a delay on when they start including it. And then how the state kind of works, similar to how, uh, Stephen was talking about, you know, this is based off May, but this is really July. You know, when you received it, I think it's more along those, but I know the state has, you know, basically when we've done it with every other county. They have not obtained any revenues from it for three months. And so I'm not sure exactly.
Sounds like you implement it, it, it started the next month perhaps, and then, and then.
Takes a while.
Down the line is when you start seeing the.
Exactly.
Okay. And, and along with that, um, when can, can this be implemented anytime? Basically, there's.
Any, any council or I'm sorry, commission meeting that you want to put it on the agenda as a resolution item or an ordinance, depending on what your county attorney suggests. Um, yeah, it's, it's whenever you guys are ready to move forward with this.
They try to, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, I don't know if, can create subcommittees in the middle of the year. I know at the beginning of the year we had a new one, but I think that. For us as a commission doing a public safety or justice center, subcommittee, um, to make a plan. Because if we, if we are thinking about this or, or even want to do it, but I think the, the public would want to know what. What's the idea out there? You know, we have empty land on our, um, block and. Are we also moving the sheriffs back in here for a while? I think that there needs to be some conversation and some action taken to put them back into one house. Move us around. What would we build? I mean, those kind of conversations, do we have land to put on somewhere else? So just some pre-work to figure out what, what needs to really happen. And that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, Mary.
You know, I'd say may, you know, that it could be used as a workshop because we would want, uh, you know. The agencies that would be involved. Such as the courthouse, the jail, the sheriff's office, search and rescue. I'm not sure if search and rescue would be part of it, but, uh. So I see it. I, I do think there needs to be a big discussion, but I think the discussion would be best. Done in a workshop or a subcommittee involved in those people. But I think that's something we could design.
Yeah, even if it took maybe a couple of workshops. Yeah. Yeah, Brian, go ahead.
So I, I'm still kind of stuck on the implementation of this back, that question. So it, 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 it may be, it may be brought to the voters. Um, if it's, if it's not, if it's voted in by the commission, is it just a, uh, um, is, does it have to be a super majority to? Two thirds of vote to pass or?
I, I'm not sure if it needs to be a super majority. Um, I, I, I think it would be treated just like any one of your other resolutions on whatever the requirements for that would be to pass as well. If that's a super majority or just a simple majority. Uh, but that's probably a good question for the county attorney on, on what that might be.
Any insight on that?
I, I'm pretty sure it's just a standard vote.
Standard vote. Okay.
So in, in for, for this commission, based on your guys' operating policies and rules, it's a requirement for, for our votes.
Yeah, okay, perfect. And then, you know, just making a comment real quick, you know, just. I think at this time right now, while we're going around and making all of these cuts. You know, to be putting a tax on for something like this. And I know that we're thinking about the future. I'm just not sure at the time it for me is right on this. Um. You know, as we're, we're, we're trying to get things a little bit leaner. I don't know if that's the, that's the view that we want. And then second off, you know, just Moab has gotten expensive, right? And I hear that a lot. And this right here would go towards making Moab more expensive. Um, and, and, and how that affects tourism or how that affects our bottom dollar, I don't know, but I do think that it would have some effect on that.
And, and if I might just add one more comment that the sheriff reminded me of. Um, just so you're aware, the window on this being authorized by potentially just the commissioners. Maybe shutting, uh, by the next legislative session. We know there are a few, uh, representatives that are trying to make this a vote. Whereas a lot of other ones understand that this is a public safety issue that's very, very controversial. And, and, you know, typically needs to be, at least the, the, what they're saying is. Needs to be at the discretion of the commissioners because the states held them responsible to do these things regardless. So they need to have that ability to do it. So just, just know that that's something that, and, and I'll keep you updated if I hear more about it. But that, that's potentially on the horizon.
I mean, to still my opinion is, you know.
No, no, I, I agree. I just wanted to give you a.
The market bear, when it comes down to what will the market bear? And then, you know, on that, our, our taxes, should that be, you know, should the taxes be coming in from the commission? My personal belief is I think that the community should be voting on any type of taxes. That's just my opinion. So that legislative session, that would, if they'd have to pass something else, we'd be looking at May or July first potentially.
Gosh, when do they all get?
Usually.
Was it in your? Yeah, I guess it would be just in their regular session. So that's early spring.
It's, it's early spring, but usually when they pass something, it doesn't take effect until like, I think it's usually May first or July first.
July first, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Usually something would be running at an interim meeting if they're really going to push it forward. I would think that we might want to maybe even have Cody look and do it a little bit.
And, and I'm not saying it's to pressure your decision. I like the idea that, you know, potentially subcommittees or something, but it's good to keep the conversation going. Just so you guys know, you know, that something this, it potentially could change in the future. So just kind of having that momentum, I think is the best direction and really good advice. So.
Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
I know this is not a new discussion to do something like creating a facility this, where all these agencies are under. It was even discussed when, with the fire sheriff, Sheriff White. Because it's been, they're working in a situation where there's. Facilities are so far.
Mike and then Brian, so.
Just clarification on implementation, uh, implementing this tax, uh. I don't know how to phrase it, but. Prepared foods. Now those prepared foods would just extend it also to such like Maverick. Uh, would this tax apply to those prepared foods a, along with?
Yeah. So I think any, anything that, the only thing that's exempt is unprepared foods, which I believe is. Uh, like you mentioned, they probably made some changes to Maverick recently, but mostly grocery store type.
I, but there's, even in our grocery store, there's two different tax rates.
Exactly. For prepared chicken or non-cooked chicken. So anything that's unprepared would not have it. Anything outside of that would have the patterns.
Okay, yes.
But I believe you mentioned previously also maybe gasoline is exempt from this.
I don't believe so. I believe this, every, every other taxable sale outside of unprepared foods. I believe would have this additional tax on it, similar to that, that s- uh, six point eight five percent. It would fall right into place with that. And the only thing exempt from it would be unprepared foods.
I just had a question for Jameson. Um. Would the sheriff's department be able to run a campaign if there was a special ballot this year to put this on the ballot?
Um, good question. I don't know. I would just make a, uh, point, and I've made it before that. We're busier now than our busiest year in two thousand twenty one. So tourism's still coming. And just because they're not staying in the hotel rooms doesn't mean that we're necessarily, you know. So I get emails from the commission saying that we need to cut our budget. I can't just cut our budget because people are still calling nine one one. Um, it's not necessarily just for the jails, um, but it's the entire sheriff's complex. And we have a lot of agencies that are at the table right now that are wanting to go this direction where. You don't usually have that. You have the courts that want a new courthouse. They're willing to, to follow money towards the county P and P at Moab City. Possibly have the county attorney's office, you have the sheriff's office. You have highway patrol that's trying to leave this building right now currently because they're in the dungeon. Um, and they're, and they're looking at going to this steak and liquor store. And so they're going to stop making that payment on rent. And so I think that it's a good opportunity now, if you're. If you're willing to consider it, I would also recommend reaching out to the other county commissioners like Iron County and seeing what they recommend. Um, they are, they put it to vote and it was voted down and they ultimately enacted it and then it looked really bad. And so, um, if it's something that we have to do and we, and we need it to prevent future lawsuits, because we are currently in some litigation. Uh, to prevent it, it's a good idea to think about doing it now. Um, because again, if we put it out to the voters, voters say no. You ultimately end up doing it anyways. It just, like I said, it's all about the public perception. It's going to look really bad.
Bye.
Good, uh, be willing to host, put together a workshop and see where we're at and at least in thoughts and ideas, et cetera. Uh, at least knowing where we would end up if implementing, if we implemented the tax, I'd like to know that. I mean, I, I, I think everyone would like to know that. So we should hold a, a workshop sooner than later on.
Jock, were you going to ask a question?
No, no, I, I, okay, Mary, go ahead.
I just, um, kind of like said, I, I think the task could be implemented prior to the workshop. Because it's going to be three months before, uh, we would see any benefit from it anyway. And then it's going to still take some time to build up the money in order to make any facility changes. It's not going to let be like, we decide to do this and then we have to have a plan and. By the time, uh, tax is, we're, we're, we're redeeming the tax. It could be, because we're not going, you know. The first, the first amount's not going to give us the ability to, uh, fix our jail and fix the sheriff's office and fix.
No, and, and like you, you mentioned, you could start saving up, but we're also making a payment still on the last remodel. So you could follow that towards that payment of what we currently owe until you come up with a plan and a. Direction of what the county wants to do, whether it's us going out to maybe the Umpire project, but what's it, people in there, we're modeling this, I mean. Still have a payment that we're paying for, for the last jail remodel.
And you could also, I mean, the, the nice thing is it really kind of holds, you know, you, you. With how the sales tax works, right? I mean, it does create an additional burden to some of the residents and to, to the residents in general. I understand that. But also too, depending on how you're looking at it as well and how much you're planning to use of it. It could potentially, you know, depending what the total project is down the road, that's finally decided on by the workshop and the committees and everything else. Uh, you know, if that project's decreased substantially and you have the sales tax generating one point nine million. But potentially, let's say you only needed a million of it. Then you could potentially look at lowering property tax on your residents, which is fully the burden on them. And opening it up because then you're collecting more through this sales tax. I'm just saying that it does give you a lot of things to think about, which is a good thing, right? I think that's the best way to think about this is we have this really good opportunity, potentially. Help people visiting our county contribute more to our county and the opportunity to lessen the burden on our existing residents. How do we want to do this if we decide to do it? That's, I, I just, you know, I mean, I just want you to kind of, there's so many ways to skin the cat on this one. I think it's really, really cool thing.
Yeah, Jock, uh, I was just going to make one more point, looking at the numbers. If, if a resident spends five thousand dollars on, you know, everything but. Uh, unprepared food, that's only fifteen dollars in a year, you know, tw- ten thousand dollars would be thirty bucks for a resident.
And I forget what the property tax was, but I want to say it was, what, two hundred dollars?
Fifty, so yeah, anywhere from like, what, what'd you say?
One thirty nine.
Yeah.
On a fifty thousand dollar home, if you're a primary resident.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, again, it's, it's, it's a substantial amount that could potentially. Really give you a lot of options on how to address capital projects, how to address future property tax increases or decreases. How to address public safety, you know? So I mean. Anyways, we just, we've been working a lot on it with your commissioners. We wanted to get it. So the wheels are turning. So everybody understands it. Um, if there's any questions that we can address any more concerns, you know. We're happy to attend the workshops and explain the financials to people so they understand it too. And, uh, yeah, we just think this is a really deep and, and good opportunity for most counties. So we would just want to get it on your radar for potential consideration.
I appreciate that, Jameson. I do have one final question or a question, but do you know what the? do you know what the loan amount, the payment is yearly and how many years are left on it?
Out of the top of my head, I don't.
If if in the future sometime, no pressure, but it'd be great to know what that is, what would what our debt left on that current remodel is.
Take a pull it up. Yeah, sorry. I just can't access it right now on my desk.
That's fine. It it's not anything I need tonight. As we're moving forward with this, I think that's some fairly good information.
If the county's interested too, one thing that we typically do for next steps is look at all the debt that may be directly related to public safety as well as your current other sales tax debt too. And we just try to look at potential repayments, you know, defecences, you know, how could this be used? You know, potential refunding. So that'll be the next step. We just didn't wanna get too ahead of the the car, the hard cart here, just to, yeah.
I I would think that that's information I need. I I would imagine.
Going into budget season, it's information we all need.
Right, and just the, an idea of the interest rate we're paying on that jail remodel and and the whole thing, you know, what, who the debtor is, you know.
And I think it is C I B.
On the budget for this year, it just says C I B jail remodel and it's got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So I think that's that's what pay annually.
I think it's a relatively low interest loan, if I remember correctly. I wanna say it's one of those loans that you're almost better off taking that money and putting it in the P TIF, right? Just holding on to it until the P TIF gets below what you're currently paying on the bond. So you might make.
Nine, and then the interest is forty one thousand. So that's not that. I don't know how mu- how big it is, but the payment they're paying annually is a hundred and nine thousand with forty one thousand in interest.
This this year, it's.
Well, it.
Most rates, it's less.
Yes, I don't know.
And and that's the tough thing too. I think most people kind of get to that fork in the road as well, as the sheriff brought up is are we gonna keep putting money into remodels on a facility that potentially everyone's wanting to to leave and not be in in the next five years? Or, you know, is this going to be that new direction where we start saving up money for that new facility, even though that may be tied to it? That could be worked out that potentially just gets refunded or paid for that, you know, time to switch facilities. But anyways, I'm getting way, way ahead and into the weeds there, but I like what the sheriff's saying is it's something to consider, but at the end of the day, you know, sometimes if you know you're gonna be moving from that location and that building, the wisest thing is to stop trying to remodel it and dump money into it for sure.
Did you, I'm not sure if you mentioned this before this workshop, but is it, you say eighty percent of this tax is paid for by tourism and then twenty percent's the locals?
You know, it it's it's interesting. I actually just talked to Andrew and he had mentioned that in similar areas, you know, resort type areas as well, as well as on Wasatch Front. Usually it's about seventy percent is kind of the number that's contributed to by people visiting versus, you know, the thirty percent contributed by locals. Yours may be even just a smidge higher, just simply because you have so many people coming here for the national park, right? And so, again, it's it's one of those nice things that it it's still gonna be covered by your residents to a certain extent, but it's shared with people visiting the county. So.
All right, if anybody doesn't have anything else, we'll move on.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Jameson, you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And so I will go to commission member disclosures. Does anybody have anything? Yes.
On this.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yep, uh, that's their item number eleven right here. Um, I would, I see the donation for Chris Wells, my campaign. Okay. And then also just wanted to address the uh, last commission meeting, there was a um uh, some talk of the Zeus movie that came through here, and I have been hired by Zeus to be the marine coordinator. Uh, that was back in October before I was commissioner. So I just wanted to let the public kind of know that uh, the film commission doesn't have any type of power over choosing any of the people that are on that. Right there, I was chosen as the marine director prior to my, um, involved with the commission.
Yeah, thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything? All right, we can start with our commission reports and Mike, I will let you start us off.
Actually attended a few meetings, uh, still working through uh, a couple uh, housing authority meeting. Um, working through some staffing issues and uh, within uh, H苏 itself and within tenant issues. Uh, uh, health department actually reached out to me. Uh, we are, we some tenant issues between health department and H苏. Uh, a little hands on there, uh. Had some problems, but we're getting that taken care of and uh, getting people, uh, getting units open that were previously unable to open uh, to get some people in, especially at the Virginia departments. Um, one of us, uh, extend thank you, uh, outside of commission, did a uh, fundraiser uh, event for some locals and had quite a few commissioners show up, but wanted to extend thank you to Jac and Brian really for showing up, uh, uh, county attorney Stephen Starks, uh, and his family attended also. So it was nice having you guys out. That's it for me.
All right, I'm I'll fall back to Jac if you're ready. If not.
Uh, yeah, I'm ready to go. I, yeah, I was traveling for a good bit of this and uh, end of the month is has been slow and actually actually had a couple of meetings canceled because everyone's on vacation, but I did um attend the uh, interview process to hire the firm to do our Moab rebrand along with Brian um, yesterday as well as uh, uh, previous uh meeting that I was able to zoom in on and uh, I think that we're down to three very impressive candidates. And I think it's no matter who we end up choosing, it's gonna be a win-win scenario. Um, I was very impressed with all of the uh, all the presentations and definitely looking forward to picking the the firm that is gonna be handling that and seeing what they come up with. So that's all I have at this point.
All right, thank you. Mary?
Uh, yes, I had only one meeting this month, this was since the last meeting. And uh, it was with the Umtre project steering committee. And we have a presentation, I think it's in the first uh, number two on the agenda, and they're gonna go over probably everything I would be reporting on. So rather than having her twice, I will end my part.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thanks. So let's see here, on the seventeenth, I went to a Guissa meeting and there was some discussions on how Guissa can be helpful to the Thompson's uh, special service district. Um, which was, it was some interesting conversation that was there. Um, on the twenty first, um, I had a um, a meeting with Madden, who's our media agency. And there was some talk there about the, one of their um, personas that they were going after was approachable luxury. And we've kind of discussed about how we might be able to shift that and what that looks like a little bit better. Um, on the twenty second, I was with Mary at that Ocho meeting. It was very well run. Um, and now on the twenty sixth, I went with Bill and uh, we went up to Salt Lake and we rode the um, the uh, Canyon Zephyr. So what, Canyon Spirit, Canyon Spirit, sorry about that. That Canyon Spirit from Salt Lake down to Boab. And um, it's neat to see how that new train is gonna be affecting traffic. They bring in quite a few uh, travelers here to Grand County. Um, and it was neat to talk to some of their marketing and see how they're gonna be, you know, positioning themselves. Um, I think it's gonna be an overall win for the county. It'll be, it'll be hard to see because we are gonna be losing days uh, as far as stays go, but I think that we will be increasing number of passengers that will be coming in. Think that they, what was their target? It was, I think they were targeting up to twenty five thousand passengers um, over the next five years, but they're both patterns.
Where what do they, uh, let the passengers off same places?
So the, uh, no, it's actually gonna be now at uh, it's gonna be right there at Crescent Junction.
Okay.
So they don't, they don't have that, they don't have that, that spur, that spur on the rail. So the new uh, um, train will go then from uh, Denver to Glenwood Springs, Glenwood Springs to Moab, Moab, Salt Lake, it'll turn around and then it'll be coming from Salt Lake City to Moab, One Night Moab, Glenwood Springs, One Night, and then back to Denver.
Do you know, do you know if there's talk about doing the turn on the spur, going to the the west that they actually could come back down about?
They asked about that, but that's that's in their future.
They're worthless. Now that's up to uh, eat uh, eat stuff, et cetera. So, thanks, Brian.
No problem. Um, let's see here, on the thirtieth, oh, and it's, it is gorgeous train. I mean, they were very accommodating and it was, it was a really nice, nice experience. It's, it's a great thing that comes into our community. Um, on the thirtieth, I attended a medical meeting with NPS over the strengthening the coordination with Gateway Communities. Um, that was an online little uh, broadcast and I kind of just went over the, your executive order. I don't have it written down here right now. Um, on the thirty first, we had a housing task force meeting um, with Moab area um, task force. And I think they're gonna be bringing something in about um, funding for the internal pipeline. Right there, basically how many units are in the pipeline that are gonna be basically getting built. And they're also gonna be talking about uh, um, getting some funding for hosting community base. So basically, gonna be kind of looking at, or they're gonna be looking at the supply and demand of our housing right there, trying to get a better handle on that. Uh, on the fourth, uh, it was a busy day. Let's see here, I had the Forest Service cooperating agents meeting in the morning. And I kind of went over some of your plans, uh, uh, the new forest plan that's gonna be taking place on Eric's, our LaSalle Mountains. Um, and then I also had a meeting with UDOT that day. Um, and uh, one of the things that came in that on August twentieth, I think that we're gonna be seeing the bull bouts on Main Street, that they would, that they're uh, they're gonna be trying out here in Grand County. And it's a way to like make sure that the pedestrians are a little bit more visible um, as they're getting ready to cross the streets. Um, uh, we also have that branding meeting on the twentieth and um, besides just mentioning the three great candidates, I really wanna uh, um, give a thanks to the Moab Office of Tourism. Um, they've been doing a fantastic job and they did a great job in hosting that and putting everything together. Um, they've asked some really good questions and this is, this is a big move. They have um completely started from scratch again. I mean, we have a brand new PR agency, brand new media agency, and we're now coming into a net, a brand new branding agency. So there's a lot of work being done inside that office and uh, Nick and Ally have just really been leading the way. That's all I got.
I'm glad you heard that last statement. This guy's been, doing a great job.
All right, let's see, um, I've attended the Four Corners Mental Health meeting, uh, the like twenty second. Then I've had multiple meetings with the County Man's Healthcare Special District, Service District and the Grand County EMS Special Service District, as well as TJ from the Fire Department discussing the ballot question for the healthcare tax that we're gonna be discussing. So I won't really go into more of that. Lots of conversation has been, has gone into that. Um, I've spoken to the flooding committee with Trish and and that same was um, Caitlin Finley was there, Sean Eats, um, and Cody McKinnon, and they updated us on the All American Wash, which is um, you know, funded by the NRCS, but the county had spent two hundred and ten thousand dollars for structures, concrete structures. And those are in and they will start putting those into place at the start of September. The road depart, that's road department project. Um, then the NRCS comes in and does tie in and they do the red brown. They also have upgraded coverts in Kianta, that's twenty inch coverts. They're working on the updated stormwater master plan. Um, so it's in the works. It's budgeted and just they're moving along with RFP on that. Um, they did update the every detention basin in Grand County, which is twelve, did get cleaned out this spring. And um, the back side, side of Sage Creek was cleaned out. And that the Jackson Street covert under the Highway one ninety one project might start in January. And that's a big project because we've got to work with UDOT to go underneath the highway so that was, that coverts can drain the water down the creek. Um, so that's a big project that they will try and work on. Caitlin reported that um, she's our new emergency medical manager to go for Cora, and she said that Cora had put together direct technical assistance from the state for a comprehensive flood reporting system. And so it was, so the alert citizen, so if you're signed up for the alert sense, then you can sign up through, through the county or the city. And there's also, um, I pause you is is geo fencing. So even if you're not signed up for an alert, it's gonna send out to you from that area. And so those are things that this um, technical assistance grab from the state helped with. And she also let us know that the LiDAR has been completed. So those were all really great things out of that one. Um, then on Thursday, July thirtieth, we had the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board meeting. We voted on a new chair, Randy Martin, because our previous chair is now our economic opportunity, our economic coordinator, Melissa Jeffers. And so due to that, we also will have a new position, um, or for member, for members um, on that board. So there's open, opening floor, new member on the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. So we'll be putting out advertising for that and do interviews. They also had a really good discussion on an updated general plan. They had put that on hold while they worked on the RCG and RCOG grants. But now the conversation's back as to what to do with this. So I guess the current general plan uh, suggests that there should be app, an updated economic master plan, um. And there was discussion, and I have those both in the packet, if you look under my, under commission reports, about the current general plan that is the um, help the economy, and then it's also got kind of the, the workings of what they're kind of working on. And we're gonna come back next meeting and decide what's missing from the general plan right now. Um, how they can tie in the strategic plan from the trails to tomorrow. So just ongoing conversation as far as that, whether it's gonna be an update, asking uh, for an updated general plan or just maybe more of a guide of what, what directs the economic advisory board. And that's kind of the direction I was working with them, um, but they're, I I'm just liaison to that board, so. And I would take some comment on that. Love you guys to look over that information as well. Um, then I attended the housing meeting that was put on by the Moab Area Forensic Task Force that, I mean, it was a great panel. Lots of really good discussion. I think the other commissioners were there. Um, really honest and candid information from different, different diverse pieces of the community. So that was updating, it was informative. And then yesterday I had a community renewable resources committee and we're just plugging along on that. It's just moving slowly, waiting. I think that the hearings, um, December twelfth is the hearing for for that to find out if it's going to go through. That's all.
Very good. Um, I had a meeting at the airport with the FBO and our new airport director, and there was a company in town. Just at a very, very high level, looking to see if there was room to um, build airplanes. So I I think they're kind of scouting all over the US, but it was pretty interesting that they still stopped. And I think that was a contact that came from our FBO Redtail Air. A pretty interesting discussion there. I have been involved in the Deer Creek Fire from its start and till just after it was downgraded to a different incident team. And the the first team that they brought in, the high level team, I, I have nothing but praise for the work and the professionalism that those people did out on that fire. They handled the cooperating agencies very well and they handled the public and they had meetings for everybody that was displaced and pushed out of their homes for a pretty long time and I I thought they handled it extremely professional and they were a team, the Great Basin Team Four out of the state of Nevada. And so they come from all over the country to join that team, but a a very high level team of professionals. I enjoyed working with them. I was also at a Eastern Regional General Council meeting um, regarding the ORI grants and there have been quite a few applicants. There's um, stuff going on at Brown Price, Viral, Monticello and Blanding and their uh, BLM is also applying here locally. There are two campgrounds they would like to bring up to ADA compliance. One, I think, is Goose Island, and I don't remember the other one.
Is it called North Clodding, et cetera?
I think so. Yes. And then there's a, I think, four others that they just wanna upgrade all of the pit toilets. So they're applying for that grant as well. So something locally possibly could be funded there. I was also at the Moab Tailings Steering Committee with Mary. She's part of that already. And then what else did I have? I had a meeting, um, our audit committee meeting canceled today, but I met with um, our new internal auditor, Julian Metcalf, and I think he met with a couple of other commissioners as well. And he, I think Quinn also took him around to a bunch of the departments just to meet people and kind of get a feel for the county and our structure and everything. And very impressed with him. He um, very much a professional with the feeling that I got working with him. And then I was at the US Forest Service cooperating meeting yesterday with Brian. And we both had meetings in the middle of that, so we had to dart out and come back, but um, we got through all of that and were able to have a little bit of comment added regarding what the Florida service is doing. And then just the last thing that I've got, well, I was on the train also with Brian, I'm bringing it up the night before and then rode that train down. And me, I've impressed because. Impressed because I've driven that road. Hundreds of times, but the train track goes totally different, it's a whole different scenery and it was amazing, this stuff even out in the desert from Price to. Crescent Junction that I've just never seen, it's like, man, I want to go check that road out, I want to go over there, that's some cool looking formation, so. It was um, pretty, uh, it was a fun ride for me, I had a good time through it and I hung out a lot between cars with my head sticking out the window, so. I was kind of a little kid on that ride and. Got to enjoy myself and then for a future consideration, I've reached out to. The clerk auditor, uh, Mr. Wojtek already regarding this and there's a housing fund that we have set up. Where people pay into that when they don't build, employ housing from some of these motels locally. And there's a project that's reached out to me, the Lytech project out on Mill Creek. That their tax credits are being reduced extreme quite a bit and they asked if. The county would be interested and they've also reached out to the city to see if we have any funding to help get that kicked off with the planning process. And I don't even have a clue how much money's in that fund or anything and I just started the conversation with Gabe. And then um, I think I will probably ask that that just be put on as a discussion item at our next commission meeting. So just to kind of get a feel for that.
Those tax credits uh canceled, is that a federal initiative?
It is, and what they did was the tax credits went from, let me see, said eighty-seven cents on the dollar to eighty cents on the dollar, which in the upfront, front planning. Portion of that housing project is gonna be about a million dollar hit for them. And they don't mind taking a portion of that, but they were just wondering if the county and the city would. Be willing to put something in towards a low income housing project and. I, that's why I think it's worthy of us all having a discussion around it and seeing if.
So there's the way payments in lieu of is what you're talking about.
Yeah, exactly, and so there's, there's room there maybe to um help get some. Housing here locally for, at least on our part, I wouldn't speak for the city by any means, but. It's certainly worth exploring, so, and I think you were at this project that we visited a while back. Oh, and that's all I've got and I will let it go to our electeds.
You get Trish online.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry, Trish, totally forgot you, if you'd like to um let us know and fill us in on your.
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, um, sorry, I am not in the best position, so hopefully you guys can hear me, okay. Um, I had a mop meeting and that was Arnie's Holquist's last meeting, so I want to thank him so much for all the hard, hard work that he's done. For the community, um, we had a presentation by WW Clyde on dry wells as a, basically a way. To mitigate flood impacts, we had an uh presentation by USGS. On evapotranspiration, which is really interesting in how they're using that data to help. Just understand our water resources, specifically surface water resources. We had a presentation by Brooklyn Taylor, which is our USU student on her water modeling pro. Project and she will have that complete, she's done all of the data collection and she should be done and have some results by June of twenty-six. I did um, have the flooding subcommittee with Commissioner McCandless and thank you, you covered everything perfectly, you covered all my. All my notes, so that was perfect, thank you. We had a planning commission meeting and we talked about the possible, possible. Code modification to MFR forty-five, I think there was a bit of. I, I guess I would use the word frustration and, and that's just my analysis by the commission and what they really want to do is. Do a workshop with the county commission to really understand. What the agenda, before we do a holistic land use code update, which is absolutely something that has to happen, we keep beating that drum. Um, but before we can do that, what are some needs that are coming out of the county commission so that they. Have a better understanding of what's being, you know, what's, what's coming up. Um, and, and really, I think the biggest agenda for. The county as a whole is to just get that land use code update rolling. We had a meeting with the Utah Department of Ag and Food, um, a number of them came down. We had a wonderful dinner and had a lot of producers come to talk about conservation easements, the pollinator program. Ag incentive programs and agricultural protections. I also went to the Housing Task Force Open House with everybody and. Just a couple of things that I think stood out to me that I, I think the community would appreciate, um. Rents are coming down, that was a statement that was made, um. The, the idea that interest rates are coming down at a federal level was kind of squelched, that we don't feel that that's going to happen. And thus, um, stock is up in general in our housing stock in the community. And values of that stock are slowly coming down. They did talk about needs and I think these are things that the county, the county should consider assisting with. Payment assistance programs in general, specifically on down payments. Um, we have to continue to build low and medium household or house, housing stock. Assisting at, as much as we can with self-help projects and that being said, I think that a few of you have already talked to some, to Caitlin and Ben about. Things like county land, can the county contribute in that manner? Um, deed restrictions being really the only way that the county and the city can help controlling the housing market. And then possibly working with the state legislature to have things like rent control. Um, and basically giving away density should equal restrictions in some manner. I also went to the Zoom meeting with Brian on strengthening gateway communities. I thought it was a little, I don't, I don't know what I think, it was a little strange, I'll just put it that way, but I would assume that. More will come out of that because as Brian mentioned, it really just went over, um. The executive summary and, and so what might come out of that? We did have a meeting with the housing subcommittee, that was Brian, um Caitlin Myers and Ben Riley. I thought it was really productive, we talked quite a bit about things that have already been mentioned by other commissioners, specifically possibly, um. Working with them to work on the pipeline analysis and also partnering, partnering with the city. To come up with any kind of innovative programs that we can to help with housing development and support for those programs. I also, lastly, had a fair board meeting and they were kind of just doing a synthesis of the county fair and how it went. And I think that, you know, one of the big things that stood out to me was as, as we know how hard. Angie and her team, Mackenzie and Greg work and how well that event went off and. And thanks to everybody that helped on that, but also that the fair board, Angie and Mackenzie both said that that fair board helped them. Exponentially, which is really great because um it was something that, you know, took a little bit of work to get that up and running. They are also looking for other members, so just throwing that up, that's it.
Thank you, alright, we will go to electeds.
County attorney. Um, it's the summer for a lot of the other attorneys that work for me, uh, so I'm on double duty, uh, so I'm covering all the prosecution. Um, if you guys see anything, as always, reach out, there's not an incredibly fun update, we'll be talking later about. Um, exciting changes that we will have in store for you regarding um. Kind of a mission statement or best practices when communicating with other commissioners and kind of focus on that, that will be something that uh will continue on. Uh, one fun thing, I say fun, but then again, others might disagree. We had a contract review training, um, it was exceptionally well attended. And we talked about common pitfalls in contracts, how to make sure that all the. Uh, directors and folks that utilize contracts frequently, that they're doing so in the best way possible. Um, I was shocked at how many people turned out, they, people were engaged and excited about it. Um, they cheered for more trainings and I said, of course, we'll happy to reply to, they didn't cheer, but uh we will, we'll be doing more trainings. So that's pretty much all I have, if you guys have special requests, questions, comments, concerns, send them over to me, uh Bart and John and. Uh, Aaron Lancaster, those are the attorneys that work with me, they'd be more than excited to help us out on some projects. Um, because things have been a little bit slower on, in terms of handing them uh hours, so appreciate you, thank you.
And it looks like Jameson's not online, is he?
No, Gina, Gina wants to say anything.
Gina, would you like to give us an elected officials report?
Tell me later.
Always happy to see you, Gina.
My name's Gina Nelson, I'm a county reporter, um. I, one of the things I am working on, you'll see in the agenda, is the uh. Digitizing project, so it's time for that, so that's all I've been doing, is trying to get ready and prepared for that and. Then move on to the next step, which is going online, so hopefully we'll do that, sure. So. That's, that's it so far.
Alright, thank you very much, and I'm sure you will be here for the, when we get to that item.
Yes.
Is six oh one and we could move to our second citizens to be heard, if we have anybody in the chambers here that would like to speak, it says, isn't be heard. Feel free to reach out, raise your hand. How about online, Quinn?
I don't see anybody, non-county online, so.
Okay, alright, we do have one. Please come forward, state your name, give us three minutes.
I won't take three minutes, my name is Pete Gross. Uh, first of all, I know there's some people here, I think, who are in support of pickleball. And while I've never played pickleball, probably never will, I still am totally supportive of their attitude, as far as uh. Uh, someone has requested a waiver for the ordinance about, um, I don't remember exactly what it's called. But waivers should be for exceptional reasons, not for the convenience or profit of the applicant, I mean, what's the point of having? Some ordinances and restrictions, you know, people are just gonna get a waiver anytime they need, so that's all I have to say, I think you know what, what we're not talking about, as soon, thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir, anybody else like to speak? Alright, nobody online, we will move on then. Thank you and we will come back to finish up our elected officials, I believe Jameson is not. Present and I know that Mr. Wojtek is out.
Jameson was outside.
Yeah, uh.
He's not here.
He's not here. So we will move on to our commission administrator, Mr. Tyler.
I don't really have anything at this point, uh, moving into budget season, so it'll get busier. You know, very, very soon, but uh, that's, that's really all I have.
Alright, thank you, Quinn, anything, you're awfully quiet back there always. Okay, with that, we will move into our general business. Action items, discussions and consideration of approval and we will start with approval of the consent agenda items. What's that, Mary?
Not a lot.
Okay. Alright, so we have the approval of the meeting minutes for July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, we've got ratification of payment of bills. Seven twenty-eight, twenty-five, the bills are one million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. Payroll is three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-one cents with a total. Bills and payroll combined, two million, twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-one cents. We've also got the ratification of the Spanish Valley Drive mill and fill bid from Legrand Johnson. Ratification of application for All American Wash crossing permit. Ratification of facility and land use agreement between Utah DNR. Forestry, Fire and State Lands and OSTA for the Deer Creek Fire Command Center. Approval of the local consent for off-premise liquor license for Golden Gate Petroleum in Crescent Junction. Appointment to the Solid Waste Special Service District Board. And a Grand County Letter of Support for Bureau of Land Management Outdoor Recreation Initiative Grant, which is what I spoke about earlier, is where's. Giving the letters, BLM for the application that they've applied for, so, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve all the consent agenda items.
Alright, motion by Commissioner McCandless, second by Commissioner McCurdy, all in favor? And, and Trish, are you still with us?
She's there.
Aye, sorry.
That's alright, thank you, Trish.
You bet.
And we will move on to number two. Which is consideration of acceptance of annual statement of continued compliance from Uranium Mill Tailings. Remedial action for the Umtre project and I know we have Matt, if you'd like to join us, please, thank you. And I apologize, I don't remember your last name, Matt Yudovich.
Alright, can you hear me okay? Yes, yeah, it's son of Matt Yudovich and the Federal Cleanup Director for the Moab Project. About fifteen years, so. Appreciate the opportunity to provide a status update, this uh, this annual statement runs from July to July, so July twenty-four to July twenty-five, so the, the numbers, some of the things in here, well. We'll speak to that timeframe, uh, start out on some project accomplishments. So during that period, we shipped uh one million forty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-four tons of mill tailings and debris. Uh, from the Moab pile website to Crescent Junction where our disposal cell is located. So we've just hit fifteen point eight million tons out of the estimated sixteen million tons pile. Uh, eight hundred and eighty thousand tons this fiscal year. Uh, so that's a little outside the reporting window, but I think that's a. A uh nice indicator of where we're at in the year, likely to exceed our, our million ton goal uh in the fiscal year. We reached the fifteen million tons last year in October, we had the community celebration, we're looking at reaching that likely um. Earlier than we ever have in uh early October, possibly late September. Uh, we're currently uh eight trains ahead of schedule, so things are, things are going well. As far as uh, you know, the other part of the mission is our groundwater remediation, during the reporting period, we've removed almost ten thousand pounds of ammonia. And ninety-seven pounds of uranium. We hit one million pounds of ammonia since we've started the interim action groundwater system, so. Pretty, pretty impressive number, uh, that is being done to remediate the groundwater, also protect the critical habitat on the Colorado River. Crescent Junction, it's really been business as usual, replacing the material shipped. Uh, by train, but we're also starting to dispose of some uh other equipment, so containers that the intermodal shipping containers we use. Uh, to transport the tailors or. Tailings are seeing end the life, so as they uh cycle towards the end, we're filling those with debris, we're using a flow fill to reduce any void space. And we've worked with the Ninkler Rigatory Commission to get a variance to put those in the disposal cell, so that's uh. That's uh current operations at Crescent Junction and during the reporting grid uh as well. The uh, probably if you've attended the steering committee meetings, we've talked a lot about the evapotranspiration covers, our disposal cell has been a traditional rock armor cover. We're transitioning to an evapotranspiration cover and this is uh significant cost savings, better for the air conditions, better long-term performance, lower maintenance. Um, all around a better choice. So we have been working with NRC in that process, uh, as a primary regulator, they need to approve. The remedial action plan and the design, we're getting very close, anticipating concurrence by the end of the year. Uh, we can move to uh, work at transitioning that cover. Number of workers employed uh as of July twenty twenty-five is a hundred and thirty-six, don't anticipate any changes in the near future. Uh, next twelve months, what are we gonna be doing, so we're gonna be continuing to excavate the pile, if you've been out there, you can see it's not much left of the file, there's. Kind of a sliver between uh Riverside, Arrowwell Field. So as that winds down, we're also excavating subpile, just maybe a couple feet of contaminated subpile, um. And there's also contaminated off pile, so when we talk about, we've talked about. Uh, mid twenty twenty-seven, when all the contaminated material will be removed, we're including the pile, the subpile and the off pile. And those are estimates, we believe the estimates are quite good, uh, so we're looking at mid twenty twenty-seven. Our completion of contaminated material. Again, we talked about, once we get approval from NRC, that we'll start working on the cell cover, the file cover. And uh. Again, continue, so we have groundwater interim action, that's our uh extraction wells and injection system to protect critical habitat. That's our interim action, we're working on a groundwater compliance action plan, if you've been at the steering committee meetings, you've probably heard a lot about it. Uh, this is a document that will determine the law. Uh this is a document that will determine the long-term strategy for groundwater. Uh again, this is another uh N R C concurrents documents, so we're working closely with the R C. Kind of as a, as we go approach. We're conducting, uh we've started conducting modeling. And been working on the G cap during the reporting period. And that modeling will be complete here as uh. By the end of the calendar year, so we'll have a, have a plan, but this past year during the reporting period, a lot of work uh. With the subject matter experts, the national network laboratories, D O E and really uh setting the stage for groundwater strategies. If you have uh been to our website, you know, likely run across the annual site environmental report or A C R as we call it. It's a D O E driven document on the D O E orders and directives. That adds all our environmental reporting information. So if we're talking about the air monitoring network in the community, if we're talking about groundwater. Uh all those reports uh are provided at our website, so please take a minute to visit that for questions. You can always reach out to our public affairs coordinator as well. Uh but uh all that data is there. We do present it at the steering committee meetings, so if you get the opportunity, you know. A lot of more information. As far as monitoring radiological hazards. We did not exceed the D O E public dose limits. We do have monitoring throughout the community. We have not exceeded any of those limits. Employee monitoring, so we, D O E has a total effective dose of five thousand milligrams per year. Project sets its own goal of five hundred milligram. And we practice all ours as low as reasonably achievable. We want to keep those dose rates as low as possible, minimizing time in our contamination area. And ensuring the work controls are appropriate uh and in place, so. We have uh kept our total effective dose to the workers well below the administrative control level, so. Got a a D O E limit of five thousand, set our own goal of five hundred and we're well below our control level. And finally, water. Talked about the critical habitat, act about interim action, which is our injection and extraction system. Uh we also have a component called surface water diversion, but critical habitat forms uh along the banks of of our site. And we flow additional water into the area of surface water diversion. We did not have a habitat form in the reporting period, so we did not uh. We did not run that system, but we do continue to monitor. That's all I have. Appreciate it.
Great, yeah, Mary.
I am moved to accept the. Annual statement of continued compliance for the uranium mill tailings remedial action project.
I'll second. Motion by Commissioner McGann, second by Commissioner Martinez with several others, right, like Monday, I think, so. Is there any further discussion? I mean, I'll, I'll go myself. I think it's incredible the work that you're doing out there. I've had a couple of trips out now. And been able to see it and it's. It's amazing. How much has gone? And it's, you can even kind of tell it weekly, maybe not daily, but it, that pile just keeps getting smaller and smaller. So every time I drive by, there's a lot less there. Pretty.
Hard to call it a pile.
It is, it's hard to point out.
Yeah, I'm I'm into it. Now this is higher, we're gonna start bringing some uh some maps or diagrams and some show, you know, some previous photos. It's it's certainly difficult to see.
Yes, Mary.
I I want to thank Matt for all his work and his staff. I mean, they're very professional. Get their work. Thanks, Doug. And I also want to just mention that I really appreciate now Senator John. Uh Curtis, who used to be our representative. I give him a huge amount of credit for. Getting this project and the money needed to make it move as fast as he is, so I just wanted to acknowledge him.
Yeah, thank you. And Stephen?
Just pointing out fun things every once in a while. This is one of their obligations and requirements for C U P. Um so I just want to point that out. I know these don't come up very often, but whenever we see, when I see C U Ps. Uh just remind commissioners to be thinking about C U Ps and annual reporting requirements and whenever C U Ps come up, but just point them out.
Yeah, that's a good uh. Good point because we do have others that we've granted C U Ps to and should probably be looking for a report on them. Yes, Mary.
I just to point out that this is not a request, uh the. The partner of energy could have. Not done uh uh this compliance. They had every right to turn it down and I think it's just another time evidence of what good partners they've been. Because they did not, you know. They chose to work with us with the C U P and do this annual compliance and. When they didn't need to, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, we we do. I mean, uh every time I've been around the folks, whether it's in a meeting here or out there on site, they're extremely professional. But I spoke just a little bit earlier about the firefighters and the team that came in here to manage the Deer Creek Fire. It's just a. A very high level of professionalism and it's appreciated from you guys and others as well when we see it in our community.
Thank you and we appreciate the support. Uh really, we look forward to. Giving updates and answering questions that we can and uh staying transparent, so. Yeah, I really appreciate steering committee meetings. I think it's a. Very useful group, but uh. For those updates, so, yeah. Appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, if there's no further. Discussion, I'll call for a vote on this. Commissioner McGann's motion and Commissioner Martinez's second, any? No discussion. All right. All in favor? Aye, thank you, Trish. Passes unanimously. And we can move on to. The title of the eagle. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Number three is consideration of bid award for the pickleball courts and playground. And although this shows. Angela Brook as presenting. I would say maybe Steve and Mike being as he's the liaison on out there, so. Appreciate it. You want to go?
Um I could just represent the bid process. Well, let me just just describe the business, because this is Andy's baby for sure. But the bid process started way back in April where we had seven bidders, we shortened it to four, we had several discussions. And we ended up making Renner Sport. For the pickleball court. And Burke Playground for the playground. The total budget is one million, two hundred and seventy three thousand, two hundred and thirty two. Uh the pickleball court comes in at uh one hundred and forty thousand, the playground six hundred and eighty thousand. In the budget. We have a hu- um. And of that total budget, fifty percent is grant funded, fifty percent comes from the county. Moab City is gonna match or offer one hundred and fifty thousand, so. Our half is six hundred and thirty six thousand, six sixteen. Minus the one fifty would be four hundred and eighty six thousand, six sixteen.
But I think a correction there, Steve, because what the city is doing is half of our portion of the pickleball only. And I think that comes in at a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
Or up to fifty percent.
Okay.
Clarify that so that they don't think we're spending more money than they wanted to over here.
Okay, um but from what I've seen from the procurement process and budget. We've got the, you know, we follow procurement policy. We've got two vendors ready to go, so that's. The only update I had.
There was a, there was a question about uh post. Uh contractor agreements that will be uh. Looked at uh via county attorney on that one uh for the electrical. Uh some extra concrete work, some extra electrical work uh that will be part of the grant funding also. Uh but that'll be entirely on uh. Uh county attorney's uh head on that one. Even in the recommended motion on this one, uh it looks like, it looks like the recommended motion is provisionally approved uh following uh county attorney's. Approvals on the contracts uh at at or upon legal review, so. Uh it's encompassed in uh the recommended motion with that. Did you guys? Have questions? I mean, uh the background of this is pretty. I mean, it's being Angie's baby, Angie out right now, just. Handling some of her own personal issues, uh but this has been her baby. And O S T A's, O S T A's want, uh O S T A. Special Service District. Uh want for quite a while and. As you've seen, public outcry is pretty, pretty whole-handedly.
Yeah, Ryan, and then we'll go to Mary um.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the selection of Renner Sports and Burke Playground to jointly install and build the playground. And pickleball court and to provisionally approve the associated contracts that will be within budget and go through legal review once completed.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner McGann. Do we have further discussion here?
Just start off real quick and just say, you know, I I really appreciate the pickleball community. Um you know, the uh patience that you guys have showed. I mean, we made a commitment last year to do this. And I really appreciate the patience that you guys have shown, you know, kind of gone through and sorted out some things in our budget. Um you know, you guys have shown great humor when you guys have been lobbying and uh and you've been very well mannered, so it's been enjoyable to work with you. Hear all your stories, so thank you very much.
Mary, go ahead.
I'm just very excited to see this come to fruition and I, you know, it's been talked about since Elaine. Is Eric Peterson was uh. At the uh tribal council. So it's been a long-term idea and project and I'm glad that we're over this hump and. See it happen.
Yes, Mike, um. Uh I was a little, we've been torn on this uh coming into it, uh. One of the. Clear facts uh that's been pointed out is we have a strong pickleball community locally. Uh I love the idea of bringing in uh pickleball guests. Uh I I. Love O S T A in in general as an event facility. Uh other people have talked about that and. I really. Fell on uh the blending, uh blending city council member. I can't think of his name right now. Uh reached out to me and said. Um. Can't believe you haven't done it already, but if you're going to build eight, build sixteen. And. He said that they made a mistake. He said they built four and they should have built ten. And they're already looking to do more, but it all comes down to funding and I really don't see a lot of. Larger state grants uh coming down that are gonna easily, I and even the city chipping in that fifty percent really did help out. Uh and the memorandum. Or at least working towards a memorandum of understanding with our local pickleball, pickleball group. Cumulated into a pretty easy vote and decision on my part, uh. I mean, the backing of this was wholeheartedly everyone involved, so I really like seeing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I've been looking forward to getting this done. So it's been, like Mary said, it's been kicking around first since I've been on the commission. Anyway, for four and a half years and and I even got the chance to play pickleball on my last vacation for the first time and I I enjoyed it, so maybe I'll join you guys for one of the uh. A a match here sooner or later, but yeah, thanks for, thanks for showing up in force and and your politeness and and uh. Accentuating the positive, the the obviously a great community.
Thank you.
I I want to appreciate you guys as well. I um. Think that even just watching tonight's meeting as you've been here and watched us go through this, I believe all seven commissioners take our. Responsibilities very heavily. Um we consider everything and we saw the issue that's already come before us over a possible tax. And how do we make that work? And. This just weighs into that with the current budget situation that we find ourselves in here and. Well, it's, it's all part of the process and it was never intended to. For pickleball players on high alert, but thanks for being on high alert. And um yes, Trish, I see your hands up, please.
Sorry about that. And I just, I I want to thank everybody for working through this specifically. You know, Chris Baird and Angie worked really hard on that grant together and. And thanks so much to those two and and I'm excited to see this project go forward.
All right, thanks again. And if there's nothing further, I will call for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Happy day, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
So we will come to Gina's next. Number four, consideration of bid award for records digitizations in the recorder's office. Take us away Gina.
Uh Gina Nelson, County Reporter. And I've uh this is what uh. What we come to is the uh the bid for onsite scanning and digitizing.
Oh, this way in, we went through the 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 procurement process here as well. We have three bids, but only one provider. Provide uh performed onsite digitization services. Uh and that's the the vendor that we're we're selecting, so we're really just presenting the one vendor, but we did get three, we did get multiple bids. But only one will be the scope of services that came requested.
Yes, Mike. Like to make a motion, I move to approve the vendor selection of U S imaging and the associated contract for the record digitization. Good luck.
Digitizing.
Project in the recorder's office.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McCandless. Any further discussion, anyone?
Trying to point out, I think this was in the budget for this year, so we we.
Yes.
Take that. It was pretty honest last year.
It was and and I'll just mention also, I'm. Glad to see that we stuck with um onsite. Just me personally, I would have been a little bit worried if the county's documents were all leave. Being the county.
That would not.
So I'm I'm just showing my appreciation. I know that it's costing us more money to go this route, but I do believe it's important those documents remained here, so. All right. Oh, yes, Josh.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's past time that we did this. It's a, it's a. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for getting it done.
Yo, appreciate that.
All right. With nothing further, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Trish. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks Gina.
Thanks for having me on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is a. Reconsideration of a letter of support for Communications Tower on Black Ridge. And I brought this one back up. We had this previously in front of the commission. And with the involvement that I had during the fire. The Deer Creek Fire out there, um from the beginning, I was out there on a daily basis and then it eventually went to every other day and. Eventually every third day and so it. It's still ongoing in the battles out there, but it became very clear that the. Both of those two communities out there were struggling terribly and then when the. Power for um. River Canyon wire burned down, it was a a real. Danger and hazard for that community to not have have the communication out there and. In my work on that fire with the B L M, it was stated that our letter not stating that we supported the highest height. Was not doing our neighbors any favor and so I brought this back with the consideration of the importance of public safety out there. And that's why you see it back on the agenda and there's notes in the. The new letter that mentioned some of the issues that happened during that fire, but mainly the, one of the importances. A request to support the two hundred and fifty foot tower so that those residents can have the same consideration and safety. That we all enjoy in this community and many others here. And something that I think we take for granted, it's um. Until you don't have it in the middle of a disaster, is it's not really evident what we enjoy sometimes. And uh that's was the importance for me was just seeing not only. The residents, but amazing that we didn't have onsite service. Our first responders were able to utilize either, so. Uh yes, Michael.
Uh like to make a motion, I move to approve the letter of support. To the B L M recommending a two hundred and fifty foot communications tower on Black Ridge.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner McCandless and is there any further discussion?
So I go to Trish has her hand up.
Hey, Trish, okay. Um Trish, and then we'll go to Mike.
Yeah, Bill, just a couple of quick things. Um I appreciate you bringing this letter back up and. I just did a little bit more research and and I would, I would agree with you that, you know, the taller the tower is, the more capabilities it does. Above two hundred feet, and I'm sure you all know this, you do have to then have a light. And so just, just some recommendations, just for your thoughts, I'll I'll support. And so just just some recommendations, just for your thoughts, I'll I'll support the letter regardless, but um. You know, I would ask you to maybe just place in the letter that you look at the U S Fish and Wildlife Services. Recommendations for communication towers because they do actually have some recommendations to mitigate the impacts to wildlife. And so just a recommendation on my part. And then also just thinking about the view shed of those individuals that live on Bridger Jack and Flatiron. And Black um Black Ridge as far as just their view shed and having that light. Um, so just just a couple of thoughts. I do think it's extremely important to have those communication capabilities, but just just kind of some extraneous thoughts.
Commissioner McCurdy, um, I'm really happy for uh. Our LaSalle fire uh fire department that came out and spoke. I was really. Uh. Naive to the need out there. I didn't know. I didn't know until going up there uh participating a little bit with the fire that. That there's cell services isn't a thing, yeah, the entirety of that side of there. Uh, and it's a one button fix and. I think. Think it's a good project that's gonna hopefully never be needed, but if it's needed in an emergency, it'll be there. Yes, Melody.
Um, I was in support of this letter the last time and I did take out that two hundred and fifty foot communications um. Because of that that flashing red light and and I understand the the view shed of the residents that are out there and the animals, but I also. You know, when it when um. You look at the fire and I mean, I I'm out in Old South all the time. There's no cell phone, cell phone service and I love it, to be honest, because I can escape. But I've also been on ambulance calls where people waited forever to be out there. You know, the amount of people that. That there is no service and emergencies that happen between here and Monticello and LaSalle is. It's a lot. And I do think that they need to have whatever they need to. So if it's a two hundred foot fifty foot tower, then fine. They can do it for less, great. Um, but I think it's a super important thing to press to support.
Commissioner Martinez?
I just know that, you know, that that this fire was so near to so many of us here. And we all kind of have our own stories. I mean, I have, you know, a lot of people up there that stay and live and, you know, and that fear was kind of echoed, I think, through probably every single person here at this commission. Um, you know, as I was following it, you know, one of the first things that they asked our sheriff's department for was start was a Starlink. Right? Because they had no communications up there. They had lost that communications and, you know, I mean, that's 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 pretty scary. And and I'm wondering. You know, what we lost during that hour, during that little bit of time while we were trying to get communication set up right there. You know, would this have been a different story? I I I don't know, but I do know that, you know, it's. Like it might not be a fire next time, but there will be more emergencies up in that area. And, you know, I do think this is this is definitely working.
All right, anything else? If not, I will call for a vote on the communications cell tower on Black Ridge. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you for that. And we will move on to the resolution approving special election for November four. And approving the ballot. Question for an increase in the rural county healthcare tax from point five percent to one percent. To be placed on the ballot.
So since Gabe's not here, I spoke with him and he let me know that. There is money in the budget because there was not a primary election this year. And so that left, they always budget for that. And he said that it would be um. It'd probably be less than, but the most it would be would be fifteen thousand dollars, the cost for this election. So that was in commission. He wanted me to pass along and uh yes, since I have a liaison between the E M S. Board and the Canyonland Healthcare Special Service District, I've been involved in a lot of these conversations. Um, in twenty sixteen, they did pass. By voters at one half percent sales tax increase, which is not on food. Um. Slowed to the tax we talked about earlier, but. The two, the three entities that are really behind this right now is the Canyonland Healthcare Special Service District, the Grand County Emergency Medical Service. Special Service District and the Moab Fire. Uh, they all, you know, are are supportive of this. I know that there's other entities that this. Tax can go towards and we do have that on there because it does leave that available for uses to be allowed by state statute. We do have resolution and. I would choose to change that resolution if I was gonna make a. A recommended motion, but I do want anybody else to talk before I do that. Do they have any questions?
Uh, we can start off with a motion.
Okay.
Second, open it up.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead. So we all have the resolution in our packet. The only thing that I would I would make a res, I would move to approve these changes in the current resolution. And that is in paragraph seven where it says um instead of it saying. Historically included for it to go to including to help fund the Canyonland Healthcare Special Service District. A long term care facility in Grand County, the Grand County Emergency Medical Service, Special Service District and Moab Fire Department. And then again on the. Language for the ballot to match exactly that same order. And if that is the case, then I would approve a resolution calling for a special election on November fifth. Twenty twenty five for the purpose of asking Grand County registered voters. That shall Grand County increase the rural healthcare sales and use tax by one half percent. From one half percent to one full percent to be used as allowed by state statute. Including funding for the Canyonland Healthcare Special Service District, a long term care facility in Grand County. The Grand County Emergency Medical Services Special Service District and Moab Fire Department.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCandless, second by Commissioner McGann, and I will open it up for discussion. Yes, Mary.
I wanted to see this increase for many years, I think. Uh, it will help county out. Uh, with that, uh, there should be the continual revolving door after the county to help. Uh, fund these programs, so. I'm very much in support of it. Excited for it to be finally on the ballot.
All right, John.
Yeah, I also um, yeah, I've I've come back and forth on this for a long time, had a lot of discussions on this, and I very much appreciate everyone who's who's um. Uh, been willing to to bring me to the table personally and and to discuss this and to go through the numbers and. Look at it from all sides. So uh, I appreciate that. And. I also very much want to point out that that we're just deciding to put it in front of Grand County voters in the election. We're not, we're not voting on this right now. We're just, we're just taking the step to let the people of Grand County decide if they want to go forward with this tax. Um, I think that's the proper step here and and um, I'm certainly supportive of getting it on the ballot. And I support Melody's language.
I um. Would like to state also, I sent an email out earlier today and included some of the folks that are here. From the EMS and the fire, and I stated in there that some of that language was due to legal counsel. And I believe I was corrected by our county attorney that that language. And I'll let him explain it um a little bit more where we're discussing here to where we're including Moab Valley Fire. Previously, I think I understood that um legal counsel had said we shouldn't include that, but that was the. The point that I was making in my email that I I had felt that legal counsel had given us direction to not include them, but I think that's been cleared out.
Oh, yeah. And I think the the paragraph that you're talking about is page two's uh paragraph, full paragraph two, starting with whereas the Grand County Commission would determine allocations. At least annually, is that?
Yeah, yeah, it was. Like I went on page two, but it was number seven altogether.
Correct. Yeah, our our original, uh, we we review documents, uh, decisions to include all the information or not, that's. Uh, ultimately commissioners can choose the language to add or not add in. We did legal review on it and this uh, the legal review was approved and then. Um, the sponsoring uh parties decided final language on it, but it still would meet uh legal muster with that language without that language.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I know that. I had thought when we left our meeting up at the EMS and I don't remember what day that was, that we had it all cleared up and we had Moab Valley Fire in and then. Wasn't in and I apologize for all of the or any confusion I caused there, so. I I think we've got our county attorney to. Educate me a little bit when I'm moving forward. So if there's anybody else that.
I had some questions to start with. Yeah, so the if this if this goes on and it fails, do we lose the point five?
No, no, it's it's an increase.
It's an increase. So it it does, it's not a one percent. It would be an increase, so that would still fall back to where we would still have the point five.
Right.
And then there's there's six entities that would be included on this, is that correct? That would be in the statute or eligible on the statute? Yeah, yeah. And and then my question to, yeah, to you, Melody, was is does your change right there to that verbiage? Does that limit us to only funding the three that you've listed? Canyonland's Health Services, EMS and Fire. Does that, would that then exclude solid waste services? Is it avalanche and search and rescue?
It doesn't limit it.
Yeah, and law enforcement.
Doesn't limit, it just gives the voters that, it gives the voters assurance where the money's gonna go. So it's strong recommendation. I mean, the commission changes from year to year and it's uh to the commission's discretion. And it does state in here that annually um. They would. Those allocations would be determined annually and the entities would be coming before the commission to explain what their needs are. And why those those allocations would be the case. And so I think if there was. Another entity that came with allocation and and then the commission looked at those things too. So it doesn't exclude them. It just gives a heavier leaning toward those three entities.
And county attorney wants to. And the language is spelled out in in um fifty nine dash twelve dash eight oh two subsection for. A Roman numeral I I and it says all activities to mitigate the impacts within the county and that lists out EMS, solid waste. SAR, law enforcement activities, fire protection services, and then avalanche forecasting within the county or a combination of of them.
I was just, I was just curious when we changed the, I I I read this right here, but then it was just as we changed the um, as we changed the. The resolution here at the last second, I'm just trying to get that that through my head, what that does to to our ability to have any flexibility.
And then I don't know that this body would be able to bind a successor body away from doing this because it's a. It's a grant of authority or power that the county body has pursuant to this code. So it says for law enacted, honor after July first, twenty twenty four, a county described in section one A, Roman numeral I. A county legislative body may use money collected from a tax imposition subsection one to fund, and then it lists those out. I don't know that this this current county commission could bar our future county commissions. I I don't think they have that ability. And so those individual groups uh would have the ability to to request it. And then it's the county commission that later uh divvies that money out. And then one other. Uh, one other note, I believe there is a requirement not only for the voters to approve this, but also if you look up in the, again. Fifty nine dash twelve, eight oh two, section two A, it requires both the majority of the members of the county's legislative body. And the county's registered voters to approve this tax. So after it's approved by the voters, it'll come back and you folks will have to approve it. Or prove it as well at that point.
And then I guess I'll just make two quick comments and and they're probably gonna be the same comments that I made. Or previous tax right there is A, is will the market bear this, right? Is this something that that are we going to be overtaxing the tourists? That's going to be discouraging them from coming. Uh, that's number one. And then number two is 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 the timing right for this? Um, you know, are, do we have enough time to go ahead and run this campaign and get this through so that it's successful right now? So that coming up, you know, next year rather than, I mean, I have, I mean, and I know I know that Melody, you've done a lot of work with this. Um, but I haven't, I I I I need to do a lot of research and understand, you know, myself. And what's going on to this. And I think that the taxpayers as well need to to understand, you know, where the where the need is coming from. Um, a little bit more clearly. I mean, I need a plan, um, a little bit, a little bit harder plan right there. I mean, for. Really comfortable, you know, putting this in front of the uh the voters. Yeah, I think those are the 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 big things that I see. I just, I haven't seen the the plan of where this is kind of going. It's, I know that everybody right now is like. Is that the spot to where, you know, as these revenues are decreasing here in our town, everybody's starting to come up to this like, oh man, we're gonna have to go. To get more money. And I just don't know if I'm ready, I'm comfortable yet going to the citizens going, hey, we need, we we need to get more money because our revenues are dropping. Uh, I still kind of stick back to the to the idea that, you know, we need to grow our top line as a as a as a county right now. And we still need to be cutting down from our bottom line um before before we're going to the taxpayers.
Um, Mike, and then I'll go to Mary.
Couple comments here. Uh, what was? What's the expected uh taxation revenue uh from this half percent? Do we, do we know that?
I've got fairly good.
I mean, that's off the top. I think it's three million, but is that over a million?
Okay.
What is sweet? I mean, it's similar to the numbers we just saw, but that was a point three percent. This is a point five percent. So I think you could just extrapolate it up and.
Get um. Just along with that, it's really, it's really hard to uh. Increase taxation on. Increase taxation on our residents when. My previous questions on. How how many tourists use our services? How many Green River or Emeryside uh? Use our services? How many San Juan County use our services? Well, it is, it is very hard. I am very glad that it is. People will get a, decide to tax themselves almost. Uh, but I I still need those same facts from before.
I I think I shared that data with the commission. I'm not sure why it didn't get to you, but I know Bill, Mary and several others have seen it, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure why it didn't get to you, Mike, but I'll resend it.
Okay. Okay, I've got Mary and then Melody and then Josh.
Well, I I uh, this has been. An ongoing concern for a long, long time and to have it uh paid for through sales tax. Is for our residents the fair, the best thing to do, the fairest thing to do. And it is also because of our tourism that uh. We are. Our ambulance is one of the busiest in the state, if not the busiest per and. As lo, as well as our search and rescue. So uh. You know, if it's not gonna come from here, it's gonna come from our general funds, which means it will have to, because we're like this year, we couldn't say no to the. Uh, EMS when they came to us because we were like, we need to make sure this happens. And so, yeah, increasing taxes is whenever something that we like to do. But I think this is a much better way to fund these organizations as opposed to taking it out of our reserve. Which we had to do earlier this year, which is meaning it's being paid for by our locals. And so. I mean, you know, now we see taxes increased, but at the same time, I think this is a better way for them to increase, right? Uh, doing a property tax.
Go ahead.
And that was just the comment I was going to because Mike had asked how much? So it's three million a year and one million of that is what the Moab Valley Fire has um. Determine that that that's their need and they are a taxing entity. And so they were able, they would be able to do a property tax increase anyways. They could detune the taxation and put a million dollars um on a property, on our property taxes. And so with this, if this is voted in by the voters. Then that will go to them and it won't increase property taxes. So that one million is kind of set aside for them. If if that's the way the commission goes, you know, that's um, but that's kind of, that they'll give us a breakdown. I mean, I know Andy's got a summary of. What he's done for reductions as well as what he wants to do in the future. And so as that tax comes back before us for allocations, that's. That's how it'll go. But just wanted to point out that that million, that million dollars for Moab Valley Fire could go as property tax increase. And so this would stop that from happening.
John and Brian and then the back.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna make a few of the same points as Mary, but but again, like I said at the the previous one, if if we're paying ten thousand dollars in a year on taxable goods. That's that's only fifty dollars out of your resident's pocket. It's not, it's not a huge ask. As far as um, you know. You're talking about taxing people from out of our.
You're talking about taxing people from out of our out of our or people contributing from. Our neighbors like Northern San Juan County and Green River and such. A lot of those people actually come to Moab to shop and they're inadvertently or in in some sense could be paying into that. Tax as well. Um as far as what the market can bear with tourists um. Most tourist communities have similar high taxes. And and when people. Start to look at, you know, where they're going to go on vacation, you know, I I certainly don't. Shop their tax rates. I've I've traveled in Europe extensively. Most of those countries have tax rates of about twenty to twenty five percent. Not higher. So I I think I think raising our taxes by half a percentage to. Um support some of these essential services that we're going to have to end up supporting out of out of our of our coffers anyway. Makes a decent amount of sense to me.
Brian and then Mike.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just, you know, when we talk about our decline in tourism, you know, and we bring up the cost of Moab and how expensive it is, right? This is one of the reasons why it's expensive. We keep, we add taxes on and it becomes more expensive. So I mean, however, we look at it, I understand that. Um I also agree with Mary completely, right? I mean, I don't like this idea of adding any kind of taxes. Um but the thing that I do like is I do feel like this is the right way to do it. Um you know, we are going to the to the taxpayers and allowing them to go ahead and make the choice of what they want to do. Um so I do like, I like the process of this um quite a bit better. Um. I had another thought. I just let's get my mind there. Oh, the math right there. You know, when I did the math right there, I come up with nine hundred thousand dollars. That we would be taxing our citizens. Right? That's that's what we're putting in. You take thirty percent, he said, seven or seventy thirty split on something like this in our previous. In our previous uh conversation, which is a similar tax, over three million dollars, that's nine hundred thousand dollars. So it is coming at a expense to our tax, uh to our taxpayers here local. Um on that, you know, I I would still like to just make sure that the commission here has the autonomy to make choices and decisions on this as things change. Um and that's 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 why I was just really kind of concentrating on that language of the um the revision of the uh um portion there. Um I want to make sure that, you know, that the commission can, if things do change, that we're not forced to give the money in one direction or another. Uh um that, you know, as new needs arise, that we can make those decisions as a commission. Because once again, I want to make sure that I, the way that I understand this is, this is that. This tax is being offered up, you know, as the commission. It's not a single entity. It's basically saying, hey, this we're running this tax, you know, it's not like the fire department who's, you know, going ahead and taxing. It's the commission that is going to be putting this in front of voters. So I'd like to make sure that if we are the ones putting this in front of the voters, that we still have. The flexibility um of distributing that tax.
Um Mike. Nope. Is all. All right, anybody else?
That's Trish. Trish, do you have anything you want to weigh in on?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
One more quick question. So and 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 I did that since and I guess I would ask Melody, is the timing right on this? Did we think that this is the time that we're going to have the best chance to pass this tax? Is this is is the time we write for this? Does does uh EMS and Fire and um. Uh the healthcare service district, do they feel that this is the appropriate amount of time for them to go ahead and run this campaign?
I think that they feel like they have the time to do it, to do it. Yeah, they have the time and capacity to do it. So I think that they um just waiting on. Us to allow them or to put it on there and then they'll get busy. Working it, working hard for itself.
Yes, Mary.
And say the voters don't vote for it, that doesn't prevent us from putting it on again next year. Cause I know the school district has had to put year after year until the voters finally. Vote yes. So I think this is a good time to do it.
Yes, Mike. I like that uh. Just run through, it goes to a special election. Uh voters or constituents vote on it and then comes back to final approval for us.
Uh there's a requirement in the section that requires both it it to be approved by the majority of members of the county's legislative body. And the mo- uh the majority of the county's registered voters within the effective area voting on the imposition of the tax.
Super majority on that final vote or just majority?
Majority.
Okay.
But but the commission could, if we decided at that time, the commission could actually.
Voted down, yeah. I think I guess they could override the the voters.
Um for me, there there's just a couple of things. Um and it it comes up, I guess, with Brian's comments. We see a lot of, I guess we can call them keyboard warriors or whatever in our community and constantly trying to. Show that. Hotel rooms are driving away tourism and I, to Brian's point, we are adding another tax on tourists. So I, oh, although I haven't looked at it, I appreciate his comment and and it is something that we see regularly that people bring up. So it's it's just something I wanted to mention. And then I've had multiple discussions. I've met with Andy multiple times and up in the EMS building with Mel and all of them. If the voters don't pass this. As a commission, we still have a responsibility and an obligation to our essential services, number one in this county. And that's where my caution has been. In our budget this year and trying to prepare commissioners and departments. About next year's budget is that we have um a somewhat of a deficit that we have to deal with. And if the voters don't approve this tax, that's going to put just an extra burden, I feel on me. He, I would assume that other commissioners feel the same way and that we continue to meet that need of our essential services. And so again, I I've stated it before, but I want to reiterate it. Essential services start at the top. I mean, we have, we have got to find a way. Make this work and there's, it's going to take work on their part as well as ours. But I I think as a commissioner myself, I've always been supportive and I I will be whether the citizens fund it. Or we have to find other money to do so that that's just the way it's going to be going forward for us. So if there's no other discussion, questions, Trish, anything? If not, I'll call for a vote.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, I will call for a vote. Commissioner McCandless made the motion and McGann second, is that correct? Thank you. And so I will call for a vote, all of those in favor of the motion. Trish.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. That passes unanimously and we can move on. Let's see, number seven, Trish has asked if we push to the next meeting. So that she can be present to present it. And so number seven, we will cross off and move on to. The ordinance approving OAO residential at the townhomes outlines.
Part of that dance moves for you guys.
My name is Andrew Jackson. I am on contract through Horox Engineers with the county. As a county planner and I'm going to be making this presentation as well as Trish is going to help me on some of the things. As far as associated with this, last month, there were public hearing before both planning commission and. City council on the application, property owners Henderson properties. Um Mr. Wells is here representing the property owner. The parcel is located um that. Thirty nine eighty one South Highway ninety one, one ninety one. It's approximately two point one acres. Uh originally it was two point three acres, but the point two or about nine thousand square feet is currently being used as a. Like detention basin. Um and that will continue that that use. Uh currently, the existing zone zone is multifamily residential. And um they're requesting the overnight accommodations overlay residential. In most places, in the majority of places, when you have an overlay zone, it's already been put in because of. When you use the general plan, when you do the zoning ordinance, you apply for that uh overnight accommodation. Overlay is already there. In this case, um uh. How the county code is written, it requires that it be an actual zone change. So maybe you've probably been to this property for us, just east of the Rim villages uh. Bottom minute townhouse project. Um most people probably tried best and probably thought it's just going to be another phase. Of that project. Um. So they're requesting that. There's a quest for the uh waiver to the. Sure housing requirement as well as, there's also a requirement of eighty percent uh onsite. Generation of energy, so power would have to be on, generated on site. That's another. Um zoning code requirement and they're asking for a waiver to that. Um to those, the project um is within the county's general plan. If there's a work in tourism recreation designation and this request will be uh compatible with that. With that general plan designation. Developer asked for waiver of the shared housing requirements and also uh due to limited impact on local housing. For. Service workers associated with this application as well as that waiver of eighty percent. On uh. On site generation of energy. Side of woods, floodplains, slopes, um critical environmental or cultural areas. Uh that the applicant will be providing in in lieu of the eighty percent um. Not zero, that will all be providing high efficiency, high efficiency heating and cooling systems. Energy star appliances, LED lighting, full pane low E windows. And then also um EV charging stations. See, the stormwater basin is already onsite. This will just contribute to, it will be uh associated with this. Estimated tax revenue benefit is about three hundred thousand annually. Um these would be classified typically as your second home. Uh versus a primary residence, so it doesn't have the residential um reduction. That other units would have if they are being used as the overnight accommodation units. Again, it's consistent with the resort tourism. Um part of the land use plan and uh there's a couple other things upon there.
Um so it was just a couple of things that was noticed um appropriately for both. Planning commission and county commission with signs posted um was. There's some state website. Um as far as just to clarify something about the assured housing. At pre-application meeting um that. I had with the applicants over a phone call a while ago, it forced me to look into um. OAO residential and some of the requirements associated with it. And once I did that, because. As Stephen will attest, you could get very into research, um reading some of the ombudsmen's opinions. And how they would apply to this development specifically, this, it wasn't necessarily the applicant who requested this. This was something that this that staff um. Wasn't inclined to request based on. Opinions that have come down since this has.
So so it's a uh it's an exaction. And I'm not an attorney. I don't play one on TV. So I'll leave that to attorneys in the legal house within the room. But it's it's classified as as an exaction. And so that is, there's certain requirements within state. Law either from the state law or from cases that have been recently determined that kind of changed that approach. You know, still still could be um this. Not a specific case, but within your uh zoning code, but we would need to look at that, make sure it's consistent with.
Yeah, and so with that, um I added an addendum to the staff report. That has a little bit of this that speaks to this this specifically. Um if. If the commission decides not to um grant this exception, which is staff's preferred um. You know, route, there are um alternate compliance proposals tailored that could be done um. With the applicant doing specific um. Sort of studies on what exactly this specific project would. Add to a short housing or cost of short housing in this community. Um specifically, it's important to remember that this is a residential use first. That can be used as overnight accommodations, not an overnight accommodation that someone could live in. So with that, that's kind of where um. The 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 addendum that I wrote um I was from. Um and I think that's all. That I have.
Be happy to. No, I could. Well, I, yeah, I appreciate you clarifying that we didn't come in and ask for that exemption. I think that's important. I got roused pretty good at a town hall for that. Um but if it's not, if this, if if um case law is showing that it's not enforceable. Then I think it speaks for itself, like in this circumstance. Um. You know, I would just say the planning commission discussion on this project, I thought was really great. We received unanimous approval. Um from the planning commission, I think because this is the the right location for this project. I spent some time, you know, on the narrative that I submitted. I think, you know, kind of the key points are in there. So I hope you had a chance to review that. Um you know, this was in a a parcel in an area that was essentially grandfathered into the OAO when it was put in place. You know, as an area that's already developed and built out for this use. And so. You know, uh I think with your planning hat on, you'll find this is an area and again, consistent with your new future land use map. That is identified for tourism and commercial activity. Uh related to tourism, residential activity related to tourism. And so um. You know, when we found the site, decided to move forward, um we felt like it was a, you know, made a lot of sense. So far, it seems, you know, that it that it does. Again, I thought the planning commission deliberation on it was great. And um it's a great project.
Yes, Mike. Just to abbreviate this in my mind. Putting nightly rentals in Rim Rim Village. Area, that's the. Okay.
The parcel is just east of.
Adjacent to touching.
Okay.
It's in that area.
With an expected tax revenue of.
Over three hundred thousand a year at today's values.
Without the residential exception.
Right, and that's the combination of uh TRT tax and and property tax.
That's that's what I was like.
I think it's actually three hundred thirty, so.
And claimed outside of primary residence, we'd get full tax rate on these units. Okay.
Did the planning commission weigh in on the uh request for a waiver?
Um they chose to allow the legislative body to make that call. And that was a discussion that they pointedly avoided.
Excuse me.
They avoided that um discuss- that discussion. I mean, there was a, there was a little bit of discussion, but then the chair sort of said, this is a decision that needs to be made. By electeds, not by an advisory board.
Because it's part of the code. Um so it's a legislative versus an advisory. Um and they could have made a recommendation one way or the other, but they decided to let the legislative body make those decisions. So legislative issues.
Yeah, shock. And then I'll go to you, Trish.
Um, yeah, as far as the the assured housing units or or payment in lieu of um. Something I was considering, I was a potential voluntary payment in lieu of. Earlier tonight, uh Bill pointed out that there was a, there's a light tech housing project that um isn't going to get. Uh all the tax credits that they thought they were going to at some point. He suggested that this uh actual fund. Potentially could be used to help offset some of that. Um. And just seems like a a good way to to help pay back the community as far as um some assured housing. And I I don't I don't know if you consider that courtesy or or if you would, but I think that could be a. Um good way to go forward and help uh sway some of the the voices in town that have brought this up.
Yeah, um so you know, my position on that, thank you for the question. My position on that is um. You know, we we hear that a lot, you know, this would be a good thing for the community, but I mean, with all due respect. I think both the city and the county, and I mean this with the most respect. I think both the city and the county, and I mean this with the most respect. In the last decade, they have frankly wasted a lot of taxpayer dollars on. Planning studies, consulting, time. Buying private property for affordable housing projects that are still sitting. On the city balance sheet, and so I I take issue with the idea that if we don't. Essentially pay this extra fee, we're not going to bat for the community. And so like my position as a private business person, as a developer is. Get out of our way where we can go develop workforce housing in the appropriate in the appropriated areas. But when it feels like quid quid pro quo, like, hey, we'll let you develop lodging in an area that we've already. Uh designated for lodging development. If you get your checkbook out and pay this fee, when the track record of. The leadership um with both entities has wasted a lot of time and money and not developed uh. You know, uh much in terms of workforce housing outside of the H D H O, which is incentive program, and so. Like, you know, my position on that is where workforce housing makes sense, the market finds a way to do that. But in this case, where the county before we even have the conversation says, look, this isn't legally enforceable for us to extract. A quarter of a million dollars from you, no, I'm not inclined to write a check for a quarter million dollars and hope it ends up in a good place. If I if I did things like that in a lot of areas, I would be out of business, so um. This is, I think, a great example and an opportunity for the focus to be on the development at hand. And in a scenario moving forward where I come in front of you and there's case law and there's precedent to suggest that. This fee is appropriate, like, that's a conversation that I'm certainly willing to have in this case. Grand County has communicated that it's uh not enforceable. And therefore, um I don't think it makes sense.
Um did Trish have her hand up? Yes, go ahead, Trish.
I I would say some some other things, but but your comments has have made me take a right turn. I I disagree, I think the county has actually put money to work that has been extremely lucrative. We funded Mackel and having their first executive director and we did that for one year and they have taken that. Never came back and asked us for money and what they've done at a Royal Crossing is unbelievable for this community. We have implemented the H D H O and I think we have, we have modified that recently and I think we've seen a lot of success um. I've I've already talked to you about this, I was the last O A O that came to to us um was a six to one vote and I was the one. And they did actually provide quite a bit, uh they did provide some assured housing, they they put a ton of land. Into a conservation easement surrounding that, and so. It was a, it was a really palatable project, I agree, I think this is in the right zone, I don't disagree with any of that. But one of the things we have constantly heard is that people occupancy rates are low, right? And so I just struggle with keeping, we keep. One, we keep talking about this idea that we have hmm hmm not a lot of private land to develop. And we keep cutting that pie, those slices a little bit thinner between all these entities that are trying to make money in this town. And so um I I, you know, I appreciate the planning commission and I agree that it is the appropriate zoning, et cetera, and so on. But the planning commission did struggle with the assured housing piece, I will state that, um so. That's, I won't be voting for it, but I'm, that that's it, thank you.
Yes, Mary.
Yeah, I was just gonna take, uh you know, I'm not gonna comment on whether or not the city has been successful with affordable housing. You know, I think it speaks for itself, but I think the county has made some really movement forward. And even it it's been recognized even at state, so I think we have. As a county made have produced a lot of affordable and assured housing. But I understand your concern, that your money, that if you gave that money, that it would go to a project. When Bill mentioned it, we we have the project. I mean, we have someone ready to go that's going to build housing and then just because of the recent. Cuts and so much funding and such, they're not getting the funding that they were originally expected to get. And that, so therefore that that housing project, that affordable assured housing project is in jeopardy. And this would be a way to make sure that it went forward, you know, that if, you know, so. I'm not sure if I made myself clear, but I think the county has done well and I do think we can be accountable and help. This lighthouse get funded by tech, light tech, lighthouse. Light tech become funded, so. You know, but I do think, you know. I hear Trish's point that, you know, people are complaining that percentage of. People in the, it's gone down there, but they've also bailed out. But I believe also, and I could be wrong, but that uh there seems to be an uptick in. Airbnbs and and things such as that, so I'm not as concerned about it being. Being able to be protected than it would be.
I'm I'll weigh in a little bit, Mike, and then I'll go to you. Um I think the intent of. Trying to help a light tech program shouldn't come at the cost of this program for one. I think it's been explained to us that it isn't necessarily a waiver, it's an extraction. And that there's a big difference there, um I also don't know of a better place to put. Housing that would benefit this county financially right now. And it isn't. But uh Mary, I I agree with you, I think that everything I've heard is that the uh. Housing is or the Airbnb's are stacked up next month, you know. All around town, so I I don't see it as a, we're overloaded on them either. I see that there's an opportunity to allow them to go in a zone that they're already in and. I'm curious about that dollar figure, the two hundred and fifty thousand, is that what the number is if this were. To apply to this development for this. Yes. I um I was so, I can speak to that. Sure, and I I guess I'll just finish up that uh we continually. Look at opportunities to try and bring some kind of development into this county and and we've all heard that. We're overburdening people and this is an area that I think we personally would be overburdening. I think that, as you stated, Mary, that. We have done a lot of the county at a Royal Crossing, but we've also got to move out of a Royal Crossing, they're running out of land. I mean, we were at the meeting the other night. And I did have a discussion there, there's other land that they'd like to pick up from the county so that they can continue on with their program and that. Is just one area where we can do that, and this is another area where we can help the county's bottom line and we can afford to. Fund pickleball and we can afford to do other things, and so I I think it's important that we differentiate between them and not. Have one working against the other, we've we've got to look at both sides of this and that. That to me is the way to look at this project, and so that that's the way I'm looking at it. And I I don't know, I mean, the as far as addressing the dollar figure, it isn't going to really change my mind, but it would be worth hearing and then we can go to Mike.
Well, there's a, there was a comment from a planning commissioner that that because um. You know. The way that a lot of folks view this is it's just like a an extra tax or or kind of an exchange, right, we'll let you do this. But um you've got to give us this in return, and that's why they have a hard time understanding like why it's not reasonable thing to do. That's not the way, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not the way that this set up, you have to prove that there's an impact on the local workforce. And so the reason why, in my opinion, the county um. You know, propose this uh. It it what what's the term, exaction? Is because this is a small twenty four unit townhome project. If this was a large hotel, it it's a different conversation. I mean, like frankly, if I was applying for a large hotel where the margins are different than a small townhome project. I wouldn't have an issue with the fee because I understand it, it's got nothing to do with a Royal Crossing, everything to do with. Again, the studies, the time and the lack of performance like with that fund, and so um. It's, I think it's important that you understand that it's it's about the size of the project and the type of project, not. Is my heart good?
And as far as a dollar amount, it it's based on square footage and because we only have a site plan, we don't have what the square footage of these townhomes would be. Um and so we don't have an exact number, the number that was thrown around at planning commission was based on. The footprint of a site plan, but it doesn't actually speak to square footage of each unit, and that's how the fee would be decided. Um to speak a little bit more about exactly what this exaction means, it's based on. The actual workforce impact of these units, so if. What it takes to keep them up, what it takes to man them, to work at them. When their residences that people just go to and stay, there's no worker who is there, maybe a. Someone who mows the lawn once a week or. I you know what I mean, like you you can't, you can't imagine those situations as what exactly a worker would be, that's why. Staff came to the conclusion that they did, just to clarify that piece a little bit, but um. Seemed a little bit fuzzy for me.
Um I'm not sure who was next, Mike, and then um I know knock and Mary both. Best hopes your business, I'm not speaking on that point, but property taxes. Being received from this development is a guarantee, we will tax them at a rate and we will get those funds at a guarantee, the T R T portion of that is not. Direct to our fund, but property tax is direct to our fund. Mary.
No, it's just to to your point, uh Chrissy, as far as um. Uh workers like twenty four units, I I assume they're for overnight rentals, you know, you have cleaning crews coming in, maintenance workers and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, but you, these are residences and that's where it gets messy, it's a residence first. That could be used as overnight, we can't guarantee that these are going to be used as overnight. I mean, they probably will be, I have to say that, but we look at it from staff's point of view, that's where I got. Really caught in it because it is a residence, it's not guaranteed that these are printing out overnight. Uh and it's also not guaranteed that the person who owns it isn't cleaning it.
Um Mary.
I understand what, you know, I was confused when. At first it came up when I read that the staff said it wasn't usable, because I I remember developing. On that ordinance. But you know, and then maybe we can't require it. Well, and it would go a long ways if uh if it would be in. In the community's, community's perception. That the residents of this community's perception of the project would be improved. Incredibly if it was voluntarily uh uh given. But I understand that it can't be required, I I get that now, I was really confused when I read it. Yeah, and that's based on. It would go a long ways, just like the other development that. Gay, you know, did so much that they didn't have to do, made it very palatable to the community and right now. We've got quite a few letters that this isn't palatable to the community, if if the thing is, so I that's my. It would help.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go to the county attorney and.
So one of the things, I I want to make sure. This is in the context of this application, that's where we're viewing it, we have to be really careful when we're looking at it at a potential decision. That it's not palatable, but for additional funds given. In a certain way, we have to be really cautious about how we look at that because that can enter into the realm of. Uh quid pro quo, or enter into the realm of of adding on additional obligations to. What we may deem as less less than favorable or what the commission may deem as less than favorable um action, it's in. It's in the area that it's in, the commission previously had the ability to set the the zoning as it was, was set. He developed it or they're developing it, that's where we find ourselves, we have to stick to. Uh the extractions, they have to be connected, they have to be, uh they have to go through a proportionality test. There has to be a nexus between uh the legitimate government interest and it has to be proportional based on the. If the impact it'll have to the particular development, we have to look at all of those things when we consider it. Um in this one, where it's twenty four houses, we have to balance that versus. If it was, I think the last one we had extraction was on the hotel with tiny homes. Scenic view, um and that was a different setup, it was larger hotel, it had more um. You know, more daily obligations will will dislikely have an impact, yes, um but whether we go through and have. Staff make a determination that an extraction wouldn't be appropriate, it it does. Act our ability, um it uh impact our ability to do that, so. If if commissioners, and again, I know this is not fun, just be cautious when we're, when we talk about. Much more palatable if you bought a new playground or if this or that, um I think that's, that's one thing that. You you know, it'd be lovely to have in every conversation, but we just have to be really cautious when when we go through those things.
And we look at this, it's not just like. Um a need for affordable housing. This is specifically related to the impact. The impact of this project on the need for workforce housing. So how does this, and as Chrissy said, how does this relate to the workforce housing, not generally affordable housing. Across the community, to the different discussion, and that's where I think we run up with some of these issues. Is that that direct proportionality and nexus to that? And it has to be weighed against that versus something we may just generally decide.
Sure, Brian, and then hopefully I'm not reversible.
So no, it's all right, I just wanted to speak up there real quick, um couple of things, so first off, unanimous by the planning commission, correct? Okay. One of stand, okay, and then on top of that, this plays by the rules of the game. Right, this is, these are the rules of the game, right, I want to make sure that we're clarifying that right there. Um and then second off, you know, when I read the housing plan, you know, the uh housing task force plan. You know, it does mention in there as well a need for second home. Right, and I think that's one thing that we also should consider is, I know that it's not our favorite thing to put out there, right? But we, if we don't develop second homes, right, we're gonna lose our housing stock in places in our neighborhoods. Right, because they're still gonna come in there and they are still gonna buy those, so there is still a need for second homes. It's not as high as the need for affordable housing, but it is still in need inside this community. Um and 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 I think that's, that's, those are the only three points that I really have.
Sure, Mike is the. Uh during comment period, was there any comments from neighboring?
I received no comments in the planning mission, there was no comments sent. Well, there's no comments sent during the comment period of planning commission, there was none that I'm aware of at county commission, according to Dana when I asked her.
Yeah, we had one. Oh, I asked Pete if he was here, is he a neighbor? Okay. Um Melody, yes, I think, sorry, I'm losing track.
I moved to approve the ordinance for Metter Drive Town Homes, O A O Residential District for two point one acres of real property known as parcel number. Zero two dash zero zero two seven dash zero zero two seven and associated development agreement.
Motion by Commissioner McCandless, second by Commissioner McCurdy, do we have any further discussion? Trish, do you have anything further? I take that as a no, so I will call for a vote.
I take that as a no, so I will call for a vote. Those in favor of this project. What's that?
She's unmuted now, sorry.
Okay, oh.
I didn't have anything though, Bill. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Trish. All right, um, do we, I just called for a vote, Trish, those in favor? And those opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right, motion passes with. One opposed, Commissioner Hade.
Full house.
And then number nine has also been, thank you.
Hey, thank you. And I'll be back with a bigger project. And if that's appropriate, that time I'll be happy to pay that fee. Thank you.
Um, number nine is being pushed to the next meeting also. Um, and that's under the request of Mr. Martin. I think that's his last name, Randy anyway. And so number nine has been pushed and we will then proceed with the Arroyo Crossing final plat approval. Um, Miss Hoffman and anyone else that wants to come up.
I came in towards the very end of this project. And a great job and she's agreed to make the presentation because she has history associated with it.
Yeah. So, oh. So this is for a final plot approval of phase two of Arroyo Crossing. In back in twenty nineteen, the formerly previously named council voted to approve Arroyo Crossing with P D overlay. And associate investor plan. It's on twenty eight acres of land, um. Generally, speaking, this is consistent with the general plan. Um, this is something that has been wildly successful and I don't think anyone has any, you know. Bad things to say about Arroyo. It has done amazing things for the town. Um, we. This went through some extensive civil back and forth. Um, this was originally supposed to be on a commission meeting back in June, I believe. So we appreciate Arroyo's patience while we went back and forth with um, planning stuff being what it is. We, yeah, staff is hoping that you guys approve us.
All right, Commissioner McCurdy.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the final plat of Arroyo Crossing Phase Two and the Associated. Subdivision Improvements Agreement, conditioned upon the following. Number one, final sign off by county engineer. Number two, the owner shall record the S I A simultaneously with the final plat. In the recorder's office and number three, the owner shall submit an acceptable completion assurance bond. For the incomplete public improvements and in and. And infrastructure warranty bond for completed accepted public improvements as established in the S I A. To the county in the amount set forth in the S I A and agreed upon by the county engineer prior. To.
Recordation.
Recordation. Weird one. On the final plat.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McCandless. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Those in favor?
I.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for being patient.
Let's see that pathway up there.
I think we will be back on the nineteenth to give you a presentation about what we're up to for the land press. We'll be back at your next meeting to give a presentation about.
Yes, Trish.
Would you guys mind if I, if I went ahead? You're just moving into discussion items now?
Yes, I am.
Would you be okay with me going to bed? It's almost four AM here.
Yeah, of course, Trish. Thanks for being hanging in there with us.
To say I'm pretty proud of myself. It's been a lot of years for me staying up that late.
Thank you.
Okay, take it easy.
All right, and so if there isn't any further discussion, I was gonna skip the additional. Discussion of the fixed guideway sales tax. I think we covered that all earlier. So we will move on to number twelve, discussion of possible updates to the special events ordinance.
Not to leave this one, but I'm gonna leave that one. Uh, it has been uh, put out that other commissioners. Uh, have wanted a couple of changes also along with some of my own changes to the special events ordinance. I would like to do a very brief workshop, probably at our next. Next commission meeting, uh, we're talking minutes on this one, not hours.
I think that I would recommend that we get a list.
Yeah.
A C D or however, and we get that so that we can have it in the agenda for workshop ahead of time. So it isn't like we're just going in cold turkey and.
And I will have a list of. Of mine known asks in that.
Sure.
Uh, I would like everyone else's input as fast as possible, uh. So we can get, open that ordinance back up and make a couple tweaks on my part.
Uh, I would just say we probably got a hot week here, but for the next agenda that if commissioners want to make a few notes that they do so. Future workshops so that and just direct those directly to com admin. Unless there's a need to go out to everybody, I don't see it, but I would say to get those points over to them.
Yeah, I, and Jenny Beth, you know, she already commented and it's in the packet, but I agree a hundred percent. I think we need to move. It out so that people have more time um, with these high impact events. You know, they can still come in. Or later, but that gives them a lot more, um, you know, giving people nine months is just not really enough time. I think so.
In speaking previously with a couple of commissioners, I really think we need to. One of them was expand the grandfather list in, uh. Legacy event, thank you. Uh, I think we need to work on that. Um, in approval tonight of, I mean, playground pickleball courts, I also want to. Uh, change up, uh, just a little bit on how O S T, uh, there are timelines that they're required to run. If if uh, future pickleball tournament wants to come in a week from now, we really should be. Giving full use, uh, uh, full use to the facility and and direction upon. If if the facility has open time, we should be able to allow. Uh, quick, quick turnarounds for a lot of this.
Especially if we had a size. Criteria.
I hope ten thousand people want to play pickleball, but I just don't see that. But I mean, I would.
I I understand. Yes, go ahead.
Well, I, it it's on the agenda. I don't know if you guys. I've been, what's your guys' timeline? What's your guys' path? Like you, you were all here. This is on. I don't know if you guys wanted. Kind of have a small bite of a potent, a potential item, or if you guys are gonna come back. Put this back on the agenda as a discussion item, or are you guys putting it in the workshop?
Into action item, same.
Okay, so you're already gonna do a workshop, one meeting, and then two weeks later?
No, workshop into a meeting.
Here's, here's the difficulty. When you guys do that, if you guys don't start the conversation, I mean, you guys can do whatever you want. But if you guys just dry run and have your first meeting be the workshop and the action item. I don't know if that's enough time for you guys to digest and and to consider what options you have. You guys can do it however you want, but we run into that issue. And then if you want to do a workshop, we need it at the end. So that my office, com admin can put together the res- resolution. Because if there are certain things that you guys. Want to discuss, you might, might consider doing that.
Workshop and then at next meeting.
I I would think that we're talking one month. Uh, we're not gonna pickleball convention and.
I mean, that's not even felt. So I don't think.
But I I understand that you've been pushing this mic and I appreciate it. And then you hang in there on it because quite frankly, it hasn't been in my wheelhouse. I appreciate that, but if you're fine with it, I would say that it's probably better to workshop it. And then move to the second meeting for an action item.
I'm okay with the timelines. Let, just know. Members who use O S T, uh, we're working on it to. Keep people using it. I mean, I I hope people. Softball, I I I hope. It's not just the pickleball playground, uh, that I hope the public knows that this is a conversation. So softball fields, soccer fields, arena. It it's a totality of O S T. Usage is the best, yes. Or hopefully future archery, e- etcetera.
I still think we should come to the workshop with some kind of a, like we did the last time, with some kind of a red liner draft already done with Stephen. Office and then we go from there so that, so I think it's really important to get all those ideas to, you're gonna hit that up.
Yep, I'll have that.
So anybody that has ideas for it, send it to him and so we have better basis.
Yeah, uh, that was the, I mean. We can all look at email chain. Anybody else? Uh, there is. Part of this discussion, one of the, the. Overall, uh, people's opinions of events may change. Commissions, uh, opinions of events may change. And I, I want. I want everyone who's part of special events. I I I know I'm talking O S T separately, but I want. Uh, O S T part of. When you go to hold a special event in Grand County, uh. You have to check with sheriffs, EMS, etcetera. If you're gonna use old, uh, old Spanish trailer arena grounds, you should be checking with. Old Spanish trailer arena. That's one of the topics that'll be there. And. Uh, for a little. Just to keep a watchful eye on it, I I would love that, uh, part of this, uh, the, the O S T arena schedule. Uh, com admin can see it and, uh. Special events coordinator, uh, Jay Beth, uh, can also see that calendar. Uh, it should be an open calendar, so. I mean. Those were just some of my quick concerns, but you'll see it all in email here real quick.
Very good. I think that's great. All right, if there's nothing further, we will move to number thirteen.
I had just whenever you want to. I just had some clarifying, uh, responses to number eleven.
Okay.
Okay.
You'll, you can do recall it.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So recall discussion number eleven. Okay. All right, so we're gonna take some additional feedback regarding the additional. Discussion on fixed guideway sales tax for the Justice Center, um, from Mr. Jackson.
Yes, and. I'm sorry, I have our time sitting still for certain discussions and I've been working on the. Um, sales tax for transportation since back when Chuck was a puppy at the state. And so just to clarify a few things. Because I've a long history of this, so the gasoline tax, it went from a. Excess tax or per gallon charge to sales tax about, uh, ten years ago. And then that sales tax is based off a rack rate. And then that gets converted back to an excise tax. And so you see that every year, they determine what that. Tax rate will be as a per gallon charge based off a previous average. Things. And so by the state constitution, um, gasoline tax is specifically reserved. Only for transport, uh, roadways and freeways. You can't use transit. Cannot be used as part of that. And then so with that as well, um, with the other. Transportation sales taxes, which this tax would be, um. Gasoline and then the fuel ingredients are exempt from this quarter cent sales tax. And they originally, um, started out as quarter cent sales taxes. The one was a big transit system in Was- along Wasatch front. And then they moved forward this fixed guideways because that tax was originally for B R T or. Um, the light rail system in Salt Lake, B R T and Provo or. Uh, so all the taxes were at point two five, all these quarters for transportation. That's why I call them quarters. And then when Huntsman was governor, they withdrew the sales tax on food. But there were already some of the, um, these transportation taxes that were bonded against. And so they allowed for one of those quarters to be brought up to a point three oh, and that's why you get that point three oh today. On one of those is because they won't allow that offset for being taken off way back when. On, um, food. And then, um, the other thing is that. The state tax commission requires notification to them prior to. The quarter, uh, uh, prior to the next available quarter, meaning quarterly as. Three months, so January first, April first, July first, or October first. And so you have to notify them. Prior to that deadline, uh, prior to the quarterly. For first of the quarter. And then. They notify the, um, shopkeepers, et cetera, that the sales tax will be increasing. And then they're given. Three months past that. And so it's gonna be six months, probably once it's, once you determine you want to have it. Um, you would expect that to be about six months before you see those cash flows actually coming in because you have to notify the tax machine. They have to notify everybody else and then they could start, um, collecting it and then they get that. Sorry, I just want to bring a little historical perspective for that.
No, no, I appreciate it. I mean, that helps me out as well, so appreciate you hanging around for that. All right, if we are done with number eleven now, we'll move on to number thirteen, discussion of changes to the governing policy. Topic in time for the question on the.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it relatively easy. But one of the things that we're doing when we were reviewing for, uh, when we were reviewing the overall policy for the commissioners. And Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner Winfield, I kind of sat and talked about, um, you know, the changes that we're gonna do. A lot of commissions have an opening paragraph, an opening statement, and many of them list out core values. They address fairness, transparency, respect, purpose, rules of, uh, you know, kind of the rules of government, or not the rules, the role of government. And those ideas. What I'd love for each commissioner to do is to shoot me between one to three sentences. About what you think the role of the mission is. And what you'd want included in that mission statement that we do. There's some statements that focus on respect. There's some that focus on listening. There's some that focuses on transparency. But the goal would be is have all the commissioners kind of give some input as to the overall mission statement. I can craft one, I can put it together, but I think it's gonna be a lot more meaningful if it comes from, from the commissioners. I think the other things that we're going to do is we're gonna focus on, um, listening. I think. The last few meetings have gone, have gone, uh, well, and I always think that there is ways to kind of highlight and do. Do really great things with rules and respect and decorum and and professionalism. And so I think just highlighting some of the things that you guys would all like to see, I can highlight those. And that's the very start and the very, very beginning piece of the kind of the rulebook. And right now, if you look in the packet, we don't really have one of those.
Don't have a beginning.
We don't have the beginning and we don't have, if anybody pulls it up, they say, what is the commission? And I think having that mission statement to be able to point back to and say, hey, we're commissioners. And here is what the Grand County Commissioners have, have kind of dedicated and promised to do for this community because right now. Uh, we don't really have something like that. And so I think while we go through and make these adjustments and make these changes, and there's a lot of ideas. Um, that I think Commissioner Hadeen, for example, has brought up, you know, when we talk to staff. How, how much time can we undertake, uh, for staff? And how does that look like? How about, uh, hiring committees? How about all these other things that are really amorphous, that we really don't have a rulebook on, kind of narrowing those down? And so I'm gonna keep coming back. I think that the three of us could kind of. Kind of do that and kind of take the collective input that we get and kind of massage it. Otherwise, I think if we. If you guys continue to provide the input every week or every commission meeting, just kind of have this input, I think it'll really take a. Easier look about going through this, because if we go through this change in this manual in one meeting. It is going to be very dull and very dry, and especially if it's always at the end of our meeting. I don't know how exciting it's going to be and how much. Real seventh hour, it's a lot different, or the third or fourth hour, it's a lot different than when you go home and say, hey, you know what? This has been great having the last two meetings. I think what we focused on was this. I'd like to highlight these things. So that's what I'm asking. We don't have to necessarily discuss it, I think. Um, and and if, uh, we would like to let. Um, and and if uh we would like to let Commissioner Hadeen know about this kind of idea, this homework, I can write an email, actually just.
An email would be great, so there's outlines, that's just to get it.
Didn't email that one, wrote a bit of homework and a reminder, but that's what the goal is.
And then it would, then we won't be. Relying on our memory.
Correct.
They'll have the, this is what you're supposed to.
Yeah, and it's just to remind those things, cuz I know when everybody gets passionate about the things that you you guys are all talking about. Sometimes these things might um fade, but just like for attorneys in court, I have a rule and. Rules of professional conduct and what I have to do in court, and so you know, there's certain things that we do to kind of remind ourselves of that. So that's all I'm starting today, just planting the seed, we'll come back, uh probably after get all the input from the commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner Winfield and I will meet and we'll kind of craft something and then we'll bring it to you guys. It shouldn't be completely unfamiliar because it'll have your guys' thoughts in it, so that's just my thought on it.
And the couple of sentences would be kind of reflecting our 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 values.
Exactly, values, input, mission statement, whatever you wanna focus on, and it might be different per commissioner.
Sure.
You know, one commissioner said, might say, you know, uh I've really, and this is an example, uh but they're like, you know, I wish we'd be really timely on things, or whatever it may be. Um, and 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 kind of highlight those things that we will kind of massage that, so and it's. Uh, yeah, so that's all, that's all I have for that one.
And then, oh, go ahead, Mary.
I just wanna reiterate what I said last with. These last last meeting and this meeting have been. Much easier. Uh, emotionally for me, but not that many of the else. Prior meetings were. It evening out literally, and so I appreciate it, Bill, I I think that things have. Improved and I'm thrilled, it's easy to complain, it's sometimes hard, we don't remember to say when we like something.
But I think it's a seven member effort, I I don't think there's any one person that hasn't tried to contribute a little bit better. Base for the public here, and I'd like to go back to what Stephen said for just a quick second here, just because I know that we all. Um, love Dana dearly for everything that she does here. But I think we need to be aware when we're coming up to the day before a commission meeting and the day of. It's extremely stressful and hectic in the office over here. And she feels like she has a a lot of people that are coming in wanting special things and it's just adding to her and. She probably mentioned this to me in confidence and I'm blowing that, but. I think just because we all do appreciate what she does for us, if we if we would save some of our. Projects and asks to when it isn't, um ending a commission meeting, because she's certainly very, very busy. The day before a commission meeting and the day of, so that that was all I wanted to add to it, and. If there's nothing else, I will ask somebody to make a motion, move us in closed session. Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for pending our immediate.
And second by Commissioner Hadler, all in favor? Passes unanimously with one absent, Commissioner Hadeen.
Thanks for hanging with us, guys, see you later.